Thing that the time is 5:32 PM. I will call this meeting to order. Sorry. There we go. Noting the time is 5:32 PM. I will call this meeting to order. Welcome. Is that better? No. That's okay. Okay, so again, noting that the time is 5:32, we snuck it in before the time changed. I'll call this meeting to order. Welcome fellow commissioners and members of the public for joining us for the special meeting of the County San Diego's Independent Redistricting Commission. Let me turn now to the IRC clerk, David Hall, to provide additional information about today's meeting. David.
Thank you Chair Bame. At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public who wish to speak during the meeting today to please review the instructions posted on the redistricting website at drawyourcommunity.com. We ask that individuals who wish to speak to the IRC complete a form in advance for planning purposes. Individuals participating remotely are asked to submit an online request and all individuals wishing to speak in person can complete a physical speaker slip. Staff has speaker slips available at the back of the room. All timely requests to speak from the public made at today's meeting, either in person or virtually, will be honored regardless of whether you have submitted an advanced request. Agendas, minutes, and supporting materials for the commission's meetings are posted on the redistricting website, including instructions to request translation. Meeting agendas are translated into Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese, Tagalog, Arabic, Japanese, Korean, and Laotian as required by law. Chair Bame.
Thank you very much, David. The next item on the agenda is the roll call. David, could you please call the roll?
Thank you. Before I call the roll, I'd like to note for the record that commissioners are participating both in person and via teleconference. As such, all votes will be handled by a roll call vote. I'll ask commissioners to say here or present when I call your name. Chair Bame.
Here.
Vice Chair Katerina.
Here.
Vice Chair Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Here.
Commissioner Diaz. Commissioner Dostal.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Dostal is present. Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Inman. Commissioner Krugliak. Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Pons.
Here.
Commissioner Russ.
Here.
Yeah.
Commissioner Serbin. Chair Bame, with 11 commissioners present, we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much, David. The next item is approval of minutes from the IRC regular meeting of October 14th. We'll begin by listening for any public comment we may have on this agenda. David, are there any requests to speak?
Thank you Chair Bame. Not in advance of today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission on this item, you're welcome to do so. If you're present, would like to speak to the commission, please come to the podium. If you're participating remotely, you're welcome to raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. You have one, two virtual requests to speak. I'd like to invite Justin Damasio. You should see or hear a notification that you've been unmuted. You have two minutes to address the commission.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to speak in favor of keeping the seven corridor together. We should have one supervisor and one. It's very frustrating. We live in the unincorporated parts of the county trying to figure out who exactly our supervisor is and feeling like we have to go, especially if we move literally, in my case, two streets over.
Justin, excuse me, I hate to interrupt you. This agenda item is the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. So you're welcome, you're welcome to speak to the approval of the minutes for the previous meeting, but there are other opportunities to speak on the mapping on item five in particular that you may want to participate in.
I sincerely apologize, Mr. Chair.
Not seeing any other virtual hands or movement in the chamber there. That concludes public comment on this item, Chair Bame.
Thank you, David, and Justin, thank you as well for understanding and look forward to hearing your comments in just a minute. Commissioners, as this is an action item that requires a motion before any discussion, let me ask if there's a motion to approve the minutes from October 14th as were included with the agenda materials.
So moved.
Commissioner Larson moves to have second. Commissioner Brown, any discussion, clarifications, corrections? Seeing none, David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you Chair Bame. I'll note that the commissioners' names will continue to be called in random order for the votes. Commissioner Pons.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson. Chair Bame.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Inman.
Aye.
Commissioner Russ.
I was not there in an official capacity, but I did listen in as a spectator. And so I think the record is correct, so I vote aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Diaz, I believe, is still absent. Commissioner Diaz is present and voting aye. Thank you Commissioner Diaz. Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Katerina.
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin, I believe, is absent. Commissioner Dostal.
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak. Chair Bame, that motion passes with all commissioners who are present voting aye. Commissioner Krugliak is present and voting aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good, thank you commissioners. We will now move on to item four, an update and discussion of additional public input and map or maps submitted by the public to the IRC's Demographer Flow Analytics. For this item, we first will hear updates from Flow, including on the map submitted by the Partnership for the Advances Advancement of New Americans or PANA yesterday. That map was provided to commissioners and posted on the IRC website and thanks to staff for putting it forward so expeditiously as well as Flow. This informational item requires no commission action today, but it does mark a useful opportunity to hear from Flow on these and related issues, including public input overall and comment on communities of interest data. Let me now turn to Flow's Alex Brash, who I hope is with us.
Indeed, I am. Alex, are you there? He's a panelist, yes.
Very good. Do we need to bring him on in another way, Lindsay or Kenny? There we are.
I think I am set to go, yeah. I can provide the comments. Thanks for having us tonight. So we have received 64 more comments since last week's meeting and broken down. One is via the Community Builder. Four would be email and 59 via ecomment. There have been no more map submissions via the District Scenario Modeler or DSM. So we have the, the one public map that has been submitted and that we discussed last week that has been loaded into the District Scenario Modeler and posted on that page, so it's accessible, you know, to view and people could start a map from that. And concerning the map from the Partnership for the Advancement of New Americans, we have reviewed the screenshots that we received of that map. And I will mention, it was not a complete map in the sense of having all five districts for the county, but rather a proposal for district four. So we can work with that, of course, to consider, you know, that area more as if like it's a community of interest or what district four could look like, but we'd have to, you know, take input from the IRC or other public input or maps to, you know, build the other four districts around it. And of course, if it helped, I believe it was included potentially in the materials, but I could always share my screen if it's of interest to look at that district format. Chair Bame, I'm guessing potentially it is of interest, should I?
I'm sorry, Alex, yeah, please, go ahead.
Will do. So as mentioned, this is a screenshot right now. This was submitted to us, you know, using a different mapping program that's not ours. So I can kind of describe, you know, where we are in San Diego here. You can see the city of Lemon Grove and then El Cajon. And so the district four proposal here would be in green. And you can see, you know, the many neighborhoods and some of the streets that it would follow. We have to assess this, you know, in relation to the other five districts, but looking at this one alone, the population was, you know, near the, the target that we're looking at. So it had a relatively low deviation on its own. And we will have more stats on that in another meeting. With that, if we need further discussion, if there's questions on that particular submission, but that is the, the general update for the comments we've received, many of them being about the draft maps, which I look forward to getting into in the next point order.
Very good. So Alex, thank you very much for that concise presentation. As Alex said, we will be discussing the four draft maps in more detail in our next agenda item. But for right now, I'd like to turn to members of the public who wish to address the IRC on this agenda item. Again, this agenda item is for general public input, for any reaction to the map that was just shown, that was submitted by PANA, as in any other general comments, but not on the four draft maps that we'll be considering next. With that, David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda item?
We did receive four requests to speak virtually, and I would invite Lila McDonald, Jim Ashcraft, Fred Cox, and Miguel Gaska. If you do want to address this agenda item as it was described by the chair, please raise a virtual hand by pressing the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Lila McDonald, you should hear an indication that you've been taken off mute and you'll have three minutes to address the commission. Please begin by stating your name for the public record if you choose to do so.
Thank you to the chair and commission members for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lila McDonald. I'm guessing I'm speaking on all the, the maps in general, so if I'm not, you can stop me here and I can come back. Okay, my name is.
Pause there because my main interest here, and I'm sure you and other members of the public will agree, we want to be fair to everyone. So if there are either comments on any of the four specific maps or on the maps, those four maps as a collection, I would rather hold those comments until the next agenda item, just to be fair to everyone. If there is something that you want to point out on communities of interest or on the PANA map or on general matters before the commission, this would be a good time to do it. And obviously, I'm not singling you out. I'm, I'm trying to lay that guideline out for everyone.
And that's why I paused so that you could do that, just to make sure. I want to speak on more on community of interest being our, you know, North County, but I'm happy to wait till the very end if that's a better place to do it.
So it will be the introduction of the next agenda item. I think that would be the appropriate place for you to speak. So we'll wait for agenda item number five, and that's when we'll be discussing those four additional apps.
Perfect, thank you.
If you have comments as the chair explained on this item, you're welcome to, to address the commission now.
I'll wait, thank you.
Individual whose last four digits of their telephone number are 0406, you should hear an indication that you've been permitted to speak. You have three minutes to address the commission. You may need to unmute yourself by pressing star six. I'm showing that you're, there you go.
Am I on now?
You're on now, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for what you're doing. My name is Jim Ashcraft. I have served as president of the Rancho Santa Fe Fire District since 2003. We are an inland North County area. We work constantly with San Marcos, Carlsbad, Vista, Fallbrook, and Oceanside. We share problems of terrain and vegetation. And the fire business vegetation is considered as fuel. We wish to remain with the North County as an area, particularly because we identify with the North County, but also we need to maintain our connection in North County for improved safety of all North County areas. Thank you very much.
Hello? Chair Bame, are you taking the floor back?
Someone please inform Chair Bame that those of us that's down there remotely cannot hear anything. No audio.
I just texted him.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll give a moment for the technical difficulties, but we are waiting to hear from the individual whose phone number ends 7601.
And commissioners, let me just make sure. I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Good evening, my name is Fred Cox, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, well, good evening and thank you very much. My name is Fred Cox, I'm the fire chief of the Rancho Santa Fe Fire Protection District. Our fire protection district covers 45 square miles of unincorporated territory between the I-5 and I-15 corridor. We serve the communities of Rancho Santa Fe, Fairbanks Ranch, Santa Fe Valley, Forest Ranch, Del Dios, Elton Forest, and Harmony Grove. I'm speaking today on the importance of remaining in North County Supervisory District Five from a fire protection standpoint. The reason I feel it's vitally important to remain in District Five is that we associate very closely with other unincorporated communities in the north, such as Fallbrook, Valley Center, Deer Springs, Dulles, and Bonsole. Our communities have a similar governance model and are served by fire protection districts. We also work very closely with our neighbors to the north, which are the cities of San Marcos and Vista, which also have contracts with fire protection districts. All of our communities have vast areas of open space and share a common wildland fire threat and urban wildland intermix. Our umbrella of various government services such as law enforcement, public works, and most aspects of all other government share a commonality. Even the fire dispatch center located out of Rancho Santa Fe dispatches most North County Fire and EMS agencies. Common problems typically have common solutions. It makes a lot of sense, especially from a fire and life safety standpoint, to try to keep similar communities together in one district. It makes it, makes it so much easier for one supervisor to understand issues at hand as most likely the solution will be the same. Understanding and solving problems is the foundation of good government. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If anyone present would like to address the commission on this item, item number four, you're welcome to come to the podium. Please begin by stating your name for the audio record if you so choose.
Community map. Hi, Jennifer Jeffries. I believe that map was district four. I mean, on there was district four, but it had Linda Vista in it. Am I wrong? I think there's a but district four on our maps that we're reviewing is not that. How should I understand that?
This is a technical matter. I'm, I'm just going off of a brief comment. The map that you saw was submitted by a community organization after the issuance of the agenda materials, including those maps. So that map is not something from us.
And it's not district four.
It was submitted by the public, as I think it'd be fair to characterize it as a suggestion involving district four, but it's not related to those maps. It's what, and this is how broad it is. The public can submit a map however they'd like to draw it. Okay, thank you Jennifer. Sure, I understand.
Anyone else present who would like to address the commission on this item, you're welcome to do so. Not seeing any movement, I'll turn to those participating remotely. If anybody participating remotely would like to address the commission on this item, even if you haven't submitted an advanced request to speak, you're welcome to raise a virtual hand. You have Rami Abraham. You have three minutes to address the commission.
Hi, my name is Rami. I was just wondering if the commissioners were going to comment on the publicly submitted map, like just as was done last week with the last publicly submitted map. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Shirley Anderson should hear a notification that you've been unmuted. You have three minutes to address the commission.
I may be speaking at the wrong part, but I'm, I'm, my name is Shirley Anderson. I do live in Carlsbad District Five. My home is near Palomar Airport Rose Road and Melrose in the eastern part of Carlsbad. I'm calling in for support of the proposed map number two, keeping the 78 corridor together. Thank you all for your commitment and hard work on this process.
Bill Weber, you should hear notification that you've been unmuted. You have three minutes to address the commission.
Hi, I'm Bill Weber. I'm president of the Rancho Santa Fe Board of Directors. I'm calling to strongly advocate that San Diego's North County region remain a single supervisor, supervisory district. My wife and I have been residents here for more than 20 years. During that time, we've always felt a part of that unique area, which is the North County community. We are in fact a community with much in common, such as the distinct rural character and the concomitant risks such as brush fires. North County is also characterized by smaller cities and unincorporated areas and common infrastructure issues such as water availability, distribution and usage, power transmission, its impact on fire risk and consequential preventive outages, and transportation quarters and how they affect commuting. Because we are a community with so many common issues, it makes no sense to divide it into several disparate districts with less in common. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Lila McDonald, I see that your hand is up again. I don't want to prevent you from speaking if you want to address this item, so I'm going to allow you the opportunity. I suspect you may, we don't want to speak on the next item. And I think I already called on Shirley Anderson, so that concludes the public comment on this item, Chair Bame.
Very good. Thank you for those comments. Thank you in particular to anyone who's been involved in the kind of public service that fire districts and firefighters provide. And thanks to all members of the public for trying to follow our procedures and make sure we have a coherent discussion. David, I do see another hand up before we leave, should we?
Sure.
Try to address that, thanks.
Louise, you should hear notification that you've been unmuted. If you'd like to address item number four, you're welcome to do so at this time. And you may need to unmute yourself, Louise. Louise has remained muted. I suspect you may want to address the next item, so we will call on him again on item number five. See, Shirley Anderson. I don't know. Must have called the different Anderson, but you have three minutes to address the commission. If you'd like to address the commission on item, item number four, you may need to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I think confused, but I am, I, I, yes, I spoke maybe in the wrong part, but I, I just want to reiterate that I am in support of map two for district five. That's it.
Thank you. Chair Bame, that concludes public comment on item number four.
Very good. Thank you, David. Thank you, members of the public. Thank you, commissioners for your patience. Again, this is an informational item, but the floor is now open for clarifying questions and comments, including but not limited to the PANA map, which I'm sure we can bring up again if necessary. I have Commissioner Diaz and then Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Diaz, please.
Yes, thank you Chair Bame. I just really want to commend the members of the public that submitted this map for district four. It was very informative and being a resident, a longtime resident of district four, I really do appreciate the time and effort that community groups have taken to undertake and engage their neighbors in this process. I have taken an interest in particular in understanding and learning about the population growth in my community and the contributions of the immigrant and refugee community in particular. And I really appreciated in past hearings that we've had, a public hearings, hearing the input from a vast number of individuals of all ages and representing many different languages and religions. And I just really want to commend everyone involved in creating this map. And I will definitely take it into consideration and in under review when the time is appropriate to look at all these draft maps together. And I have, actually do have a question for Flow on this particular map. And I want to make sure, does it, because all the other map, draft maps that were presented, this information page, which I think is very descriptive of what's, you know, some of the, the descriptions of the population and breakdown by race, ethnicity, voter, VAP information, would that be made also available for this map as well?
Correct, that is something we could do. As mentioned, you know, this, this submission came in since the last meeting, so we were focused on the draft maps. But yeah, this is exactly something that we could get into our systems, you know, and have that be a district for and run those same statistics for.
Okay, excellent. And one question, I couldn't really tell from the level of description detail, does it, is there street names provided down to that detail for this map or highways major thoroughfares? Because it was, I'm, I'm trying to see if that there's a particular community in there that I wasn't sure was part of the map, but wanted to just double check.
Right, I don't believe the map that was submitted had the very detailed streets that had some of the major roads. I see state route 75 and 15 and things like that, but it does have enough detail for us to, to look at in our systems, because we have the same information, you know, with base maps and things that we can get it to match this map. And even better, we have to look into this, it might be possible to even get the, the spatial data that was used to create the map, and then we'd have that, you know, exact replica. But I have all confidence that we can match this and come up with the same statistics and we can, you know, mention some of the roads if need be at the next meeting, so you can understand how it's drawn.
Okay. And then as far as the communities west, it looks like west of the 15 were captured as well. And then north of I-8, we're looking at Mission Valley, a part of Grantville. Is that correct? And Qualcomm Stadium area?
Yeah, I, I'm looking at the map and I can bring it up one more time, just so that we're all on the same page. Yeah, I, I'm looking at the map and I can bring it up one more time, just so that we're all on the same page.
Or to see what order is.
Yeah, I think we'll be able to, you know, define this a little bit better at the next meeting with some, with our mapping technology. But yeah, you are correct, looking at, you know, part of Grantville.
Okay.
But yeah, not entirely sure until I would look at, you know, the San Diego County community areas and things like that to see if it encapsulates, you know, all of these as a whole, or if it's, you know, potentially splitting some of these neighborhoods.
Yeah, I think it's important to take into account, as we're looking at this map, the community, existing community plans as well. And making sure that from, from the community plan perspective, because I know each, each time it's it, it just, I don't, I don't want to go into the history of community plan development, but making sure, like as you detailed here on the info sheet, you know, which community plan areas are encompassed. And I find that's really helpful. Because we certainly don't want to split those areas either. And I'm assuming that the things like special districts will also be included as well. And that, I mean, there weren't, I don't think there would be in D4, but just.
Yeah, on that note, I think we would, Flo would probably want direction from the IRC. I mean, what, I believe you're referring to the report that we produced that has the population equality between districts on the first page and so on. And then there is the table that is about municipalities or other communities of interest that are split. We have other data from San Diego County. Perhaps, you know, fire districts, for instance, things like that. It could be something we would add. Of course, we have a lot of information, so we didn't want to inundate the IRC in the public with too many of those items. But if there's one in particular or a few that the IRC feels would be important to add to that, we certainly could.
Okay, thank you.
That we received, and as we've seen a kind of a pattern over the last number of weeks where a committee or a group of people in one community is in contact with each other, and then we get a number of comments that are the same or similar, sometimes word for word the same. And we received one that was talking about the community of Fallbrook. And the last sentence bothered me. It says, "There's absolutely no reason to alter the current boundaries except for political gain." And I would like to know if we are responding to comments such as this, because if one person says that and then the next person says it, then suddenly it becomes the truth. And so what are we doing when we get a comment like that that needs to, needs to be corrected?
Well, in the sense that that's a question of commission action rather than something we're asking Flow Analytics to do, I would say really two comments. One is, it can certainly be made, a comment, a response, an analysis of it could certainly be made now under this agenda item or similar agenda items, or it could be made in connection with specific aspects of our draft maps or the discussions to those draft maps as Commissioners see fit. I certainly would not want to be in a position of saying the public cannot offer a comment like that because that's for the public, any member of the public to make for themselves. I think for the commissioners, you also are free to say what you need to on issues like that. So whether it's now or during the mapping discussion in a link to a specific issue on a specific map, I think Commissioner Hansen, you should feel free to say what you need to say.
Well, my, my comment is that we have been from the start very clear on our efforts and the law that make this an independent commission. This is not being driven by any kind of political action. We have bent over backwards not to involve political parties in our conversations and to be impartial. And so I would urge the community to believe us, to follow the law and not make assumptions like that that are based on past history. So I just felt a need to address the comment so that it doesn't spread in other people, because I've heard this from a lot of people. They think, oh, of course, this is a political thing. No, it is not. It used to be, but it is not. So please spread that word to anybody that hasn't heard it already. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Ponce.
Yes, thank you. I want to just echo what Commissioner Diaz said about those that submitted the rendering for District Four. I thought it was very nicely done, so I'm just going to ask Flow Analytics to convert that submission into the DSM model so we can compare and contrast that with the other four submissions that we're going to discuss today. And so again, thank you for that submission. I thought it was very informative and detailed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. And it does strike me, this is something we'll want to clarify, I think, in the next agenda item, especially with the idea that we will hopefully be getting more maps from the public. We need to keep in mind that this, this particular item is, of course, an informational item where questions and points that you, Commissioner Hansen, Commissioner Diaz have made are completely relevant. What I would like us to bear in mind is when we issue instructions at this, in the next agenda item, those are particularly pointed to the draft maps, but we can certainly incorporate instructions for any maps submitted by the public. And we'll talk more about that in the next agenda item, which we may be about to start because at the moment I have no other request. Ah, there we go. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, please.
Yeah, just a quick sort of question and comment. On the public, on the update on public input, all we heard was the number of comments that were received and the route. Community builder tool, email, ecomments. And I actually, I mean, I'm reading those too as they come in now, because we get them via email from staff. But I was kind of hoping, if not expecting, that we would actually get a little bit more of perhaps an executive summary or some, something that told us again what the trends are, responses to, you know, either, you know, reemphasis of previous comments or reputations of previous comment. I have to say that receiving just a very brief review of the number of comments that we received feels a little inadequate. Thanks.
Let me ask Alex or Commissioner Inman if they want to address that at this point. Okay, very well.
Chair Bame.
Please go ahead.
Yes, we can definitely provide that, Commissioner Garcia. That is definitely doable. And we have had the tool that we've used to illustrate some of this in the past. And we're trying to build that out to be more functional, to provide additional detail on the trends. But point taken, and we will work to provide more detail on the types of information, not just accounts. Thank you very much.
If I'm lip reading correctly, that was a thank you. So I think we're, okay, good. Great. So with no further requests to speak, again, thank you, Alex, for the presentation and the walkthrough of the Pana map, and thanks, Commissioners, for the discussion. Now, we turn to item five, a discussion and possible approval of direction to Flow Analytics regarding refinement of IRC draft maps. We have indeed had four draft maps developed by Flow based on the IRC's direction, issue, directions issued at our October 14th meeting that were provided to Commissioners and posted on the IRC website. Today's agenda item provides Commissioners with opportunities to deliver opening statements, discuss those draft maps, and provide instruction to flow, to refine those maps. More on that in a moment as we continue working towards a final map to be adopted before December 15th, 2021. We're going to start this agenda item with opening comments from our demographic services' single point of contact, Commissioner Ken Inman, and then followed by some additional comments from Flow Analytics' Alex Sprash. As discussed previously, we will then hear statements from each Commissioner, ideally at least on which maps they prefer, and then move on to specific motions. We'll discuss that process in a little more detail in just a moment. For now though, Commissioner Inman, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Chair Bame. Tonight, Flow presents a first set of draft maps for public and IRC review, comment, and revision. We offer but one starting point, a way to get the process going to redraw the lines. The ultimate redistricting map adopted by the IRC may be radically different from any of these, or maybe very similar. As a commission, we just don't know yet. There is still time for public comment to influence the outcome. There is still time for the public to submit their own versions of draft maps for consideration, which is what we've been seeing happen. That said, we do operate with a clear deadline of December 15th. And so as a matter of process, as we get closer to that date, the number of potential draft maps under consideration will start to close. It is the commission's responsibility to do this as we work towards a consensus, a consensus based on statutory criteria. That criteria precludes consideration of incumbents, political parties, or political interests, and the commission's discretion regarding what best satisfies that criteria. And so with that, let's get this party started, and I turn back to what you've all been waiting for clearly as we listen to the public comment, the main event, and that's Alex with Flow Analytics. So I turn it over to you, Alex. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Inman. So I'm going to share my screen, and we are going to walk through the draft maps. And I trust you have all been able to look at the draft maps. The maps themselves and the statistics are part of the agenda item five as PDFs. So that contains, just to reiterate, the overview maps. There are population statistics associated with them, measuring some of the criteria such as population inequality amongst districts and individual maps per district with a bit more detail. And although those are handy, we wanted to present this information in a little bit more interactive way, especially to field questions at the end as we might need to zoom in and look at particular streets or neighborhoods that are in the draft plan. So we have prepared a web map and what's called a story map to go through these. So I'm going to start, and I do want to be clear at the very beginning here. We developed the four draft plan maps that were included. But we also want to start with one that took the first motion of last week very literally and tried to draw districts that are horizontal across the county so that each district contains coastline, urban area, and unincorporated East County. So I just want to be clear that this is not the first or draft map one, but rather an addition at the start to, to review, and then we will jump into one through four. So this first one, like I mentioned, is taking that horizontal directive as literally as possible. And you can see that this came up with a overall deviation of 8.5%. So we're below that 10% goal that we're shooting for, getting as close to zero as possible. But this was meant to show that it is possible to draw many different styles of maps and meet that criteria. But as we see, as we zoom in a little farther, it's not meeting the rest of the criteria in that first motion. But here at the bottom, we're going to zoom in and see this lightly blue shaded district as number one. You can see the statistics along with it. For, this is total population by race, ethnicity, just as we're scrolling through. We can note some of these things, total population that is a little bit under at negative 2.4% deviation, but still well balanced. And this includes Coronado, Imperial Beach, National City, Chula Vista, and a portion of some other San Diego neighborhoods like Encanto. And that would extend, you know, all the way across to, to the east side of the county. And as we scroll down, you can see the next district two in green also having a small portion of coastline, Point Loma, going across central downtown San Diego. That's including many of those central neighborhoods, La Mesa, Lemon Grove, Rancho San Diego, and portions of Spring Valley. The next being District Three, just to the north, spanning coastline from La Jolla to Mission Beach. This includes some communities such as Kearney Mesa, Navajo, cities of Santee, El Cajon, as well as the eastern census designated places like Winter Gardens and Lakeside. District Four kind of in that purple. That is including Carmel Valley near Mesa, Del Mar, Salona Beach, and Cenitas, Escondido, and Poway. Also extending, you know, all the way across the county. And lastly, District Five, including most of North County, municipalities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, San Marcos, Vista, North County census designated places like Camp Pendleton, Bonsol, and Valley Center. So as mentioned at the start of this, this is kind of, you know, the ability to draw this, it's possible, you know, to meet that first criteria of this motion, but it does compromise other standard criteria that were in that exact motion, such as splitting noted communities of interest like University and other North San Diego communities. And therefore, we thought, you know, this isn't really our best foot forward to be draft one. So draft one, as I scroll through, is really kind of trying to take that, you know, horizontal nature in essence, still managing to have every district have coastline, urban area, and portions of unincorporated East County. But maintaining and reducing the overall range to 4.4%, making the districts, you know, more compact. Obviously, we don't have a very thin linear District Two anymore in this map. And also keeping some of the overarching communities of interest intact. I'm thinking there, like rural populations in East County, you can imagine, you know, in that horizontal nature are, are split up. And here, they're a little, you know, a little bit better represented, compact in terms of being in District Five or mostly in District One. So districts in draft map one, we have District One, including Imperial Beach, National City, Chula Vista, and portions of Skyline Paradise Hills, Spring Valley, and Rancho San Diego. Some of the things I'm just going to note quickly on the map to, to give some context here is the districts are the shaded colors. The teal or blue outlines are incorporated cities such as National City, Chula Vista. The orange boundaries are census designated places, Alpine, Lakeside. And then a few of the particular community plan areas that have been mentioned are highlighted here kind of in a pink color. So that's in court, looking at some of those areas just to the south of El Cajon. So in this District One, we can see the race ethnicity breakdown. It says a deviation very close to zero at negative 0.3%. District Two is much more compact in this sense. It doesn't extend all the way across, but it does include Coronado, Point Loma, many of the self-central San Diego districts, and then La Mesa. many of the self-central San Diego districts, and then La Mesa and Lemon Grove. District Three, forming kind of that central um, district here, is including La Jolla to Mission Beach along the coast, University, Kearney Mesa, City of Santee, Alcoa, portion of Mir Mesa, which is important there. There's still inevitably some, you know, splitting of some neighborhoods and community plan areas to take note of and comment on. Um, and then there's eastern CDPs census design in places such as Winter Garden and Eucalyptus Hills. District Four includes Carmel Valley, portion of Mir Mesa, cities of Del Mar, Salona Beach, and Cenitas, Escondido, and Poway. Can also see that it encapsulates um, a fair amount of unincorporated county up to the east. District Five this includes Carlsbad, Oceanside, San Marcos, Vista, North County Census Designated Places that I mentioned earlier, like Camp Pendleton, Bon Sol, and Valley Center. Um, it's a one theme, you know, we'll see as we work through these draft maps. I know we've talked about Carlsbad and Escondido and other Highway seventy-eight corridor cities, and we'll see that there is variation and how those are dealt with um, based on the motions from last week and the draft maps that resulted from them. Um, but in this case, um, Escondido is in District Four. And with that, unless there's direction um, from Chair Baim or others, I'm going to continue with the draft maps. And I think we can hold comments and questions um, till the end. So with that, I'm going to scroll through.
Before, to, before you leave that map, um, let me just ask commissioners, and I I think this might be um, a good way to proceed. Are there any very specific technical questions while we have this map up? Because I would like to keep, if if you will, the the just straightforward, very direct facts. I'm not looking for analysis or comment. I agree, Alex, that will best come later um, and will be more useful uh, for Flow to collect at that point. But I have Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you. Just real quick, I noticed the tribal governments and reservations um, in the second iteration. Uh, were they, and and moving forward for the other maps as well, um, how did you take that into consideration um, as you were trying to draw the lines?
Great comment. Yeah, you are correct. I have not had them as outlines in this map, but they are considered during the map drawing process. And that's definitely something we can add pretty quickly to make sure it's a good visual for everyone. Um, yes, thank you.
Okay, so please go ahead.
Great, thanks. So draft map two, we're looking at currently, this is um, two point two percent overall deviation. So you can see from this table, you know, looking pretty good across the board. Um, District Four is the one that is um, the highest with one point two percent over the ideal. Um, and District Two being um, a little underpopulated, point nine percent under the ideal. So vastly different looking map, obviously. Um, much um, more to the point of the the motion and the criteria set forth. Um, things like having a coastal district, that being District Two in this case. Um, so I'm going to step through again which communities are involved in each of these. So for District One, we have Imperial Beach and National City, Chula Vista, and many of the neighborhoods of South San Diego, Encanto, um, Skyline Paradise Hills, and Alpine, even extending up to kind of, you know, north of in the county slightly um, for District One. And then District Two being um, that coastal district that um, was desired so that it would include Coronado, Point Loma, all the way up to Encinitas here. And it also encapsulates, you know, some of these neighborhoods of San Diego to make sure it hits that population mark um, that we're looking for. So um, places like Claremont Mesa and University. District Three includes self-central neighborhoods of San Diego, like Mid-City Heights, um, as well as the cities of uh, Lemon Grove, La Mesa, Alcoa, Santee, uh, Rancho San Diego, and portions, as you can see down here, of La Presa and Spring Valley, which are also kind of, in this case, split between District One and District Three. Onto District Four. Um, this is quite large. Now you can see it in um, encapsulates North County as well as North Central here, and notably not including all of the cities along the Highway seventy-eight corridor. So we're looking at places like Kearney Mesa, Carmel Valley, Mir Mesa, City of Poway, but then extending north and east to wrap around those Highway seventy-eight corridor cities to capture census designated places like Valley Center, Hidden Meadows, Bon Sol, and the rest of North County. And the reason being is then District Five, um, because of the, you know, those population centers of the Highway ninety-eight, uh, seventy-eight, excuse me, corridor cities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos, and Escondido can all be within a single district. And one other slight thing to note is just to get that population overall range or deviation to be as near to zero as possible. There's a bit of um, area north of the city of Oceanside included in District Five, in this case. So moving on to draft map three, can see that really not that much has changed in the south. In fact, uh, literally unchanged District One, Two, and Three. Because that motion was built upon um, the motion that created draft map two. But the idea in this motion and this draft map is um, to understand that potentially the Highway seventy-eight corridor cities cannot all be together, but rather District Five would include some of those census designated places and communities in North County. So in this map, we also have a low deviation of two point five percent. And I'm going to scroll through Districts One, Two, and Three really quickly because we've just covered those exact statistics in the last draft map. But zooming out here to what draft um, District Four looks like in this draft map, we see it now includes Escondido. It does not wrap around to encapsulate Valley Center, Bon Sol, etc., but rather extends straight to the east to capture other rural East County areas. And then the change, and of course, to District Five being that it gives up Escondido. It requires more population, takes that on from the North County census designated places shown here. And I think this is a a good point to just point out that, you know, we did look at the public comments, and we were seeing that there are many about the boundary between District Four and Five in this draft map, and understanding that it splits some communities like Ramona. Um, because any community that's running along Highway seventy-eight that was used as the border. So we understand that. I just want to reiterate that the intent of draft maps is to show kind of the general separation of districts and be a starting point and help elicit feedback from the IRC and the public. And then we will, of course, take that feedback um, and help the maps evolve through this process and iterate, and boundaries will be adjusted to ensure that these communities are wholly within a district when possible. And I say it when possible because I just want to, for instance, um, mention, you know, that how this map making process goes is if you think, yes, we want to keep Ramona, Julian, and other cities and communities along Highway seventy-eight whole, we have to also remember that, you know, Ramona has a um, fairly high population considering um, you know, where it's its peers out in East County. And if that were to remain in District Five wholly, that might mean that some of the other cities along Highway seventy-eight would need to be in District Four to balance the population. So just want to emphasize that these are the first of several iterations of draft maps. And and just to echo what Commissioner Inman said earlier, it's possible that one of these draft maps becomes the final map, but it's far more likely that the final map will be a configuration that combines elements of the draft maps, um, the map submitted by the public and other public feedback. So with that, I'm going to move on to draft map four. This one has a deviation of five point seven percent. You can see some common themes as we walk through it. Um, but yet another configuration that meets the population criteria, reasonably compact, contiguous. Um, this one um, just combines um, some of the um, things we considered in the motions that created draft map two and three, and and pointed out that we should try even harder to keep communities of interest together, especially, you know, District One, the Hispanic Latino population, thinking about the BIPOC population along Highway Eight in those communities, as well as um, Asian community more generally in central um, in North San Diego. So with that, look at District One here includes Imperial Beach, National City, Chula Vista, Skyline Paradise Hills, and then portions of La Presa, Spring Valley, Southern San Diego, and Encanto. District Two is quite um, condensed here. This is a, you know, population center. This one, um, in comparing these and looking at the map um, submitted by Pana, that this map draft four and as well as draft two um, have elements of that. So this should be um, straightforward for us to incorporate that feedback from the public and and build that draft map for um, of District Four, excuse me. So in District Two here, we have um, self-central neighborhoods of San Diego, like Mid-City Heights, cities of Lemon Grove, La Mesa, Alcoa, Santee, Rancho, San Diego. Um, and then conversely, those the same border communities that are shared, in this case, uh, between District One and District Two. District Three includes Coronado all the way um, to Pacific Beach along the coastline. Then has many of those east and north uh, neighborhoods of San Diego. Um, some of them being Claremont Mesa, Kearney Mesa, Carmel Valley, and Mir Mesa. District Four this is including coastline then from La Jolla, north to Encinitas, includes the city of Escondido, Poway, and then eastern census designated places like Lakeside, Winter Gardens, and Alpine. And lastly, District Five, um, common theme here, we have the five cities that are part of Highway seventy-eight corridor, and those census designated places north of those cities in North County. So with that, I'm open for questions. And um, and as you can see here, we have the ability to kind of drill down into any of these maps or some of the different data layers if there are questions to that effect.
Well, thank you, Alex. Um, before we take any questions, let me just offer, I think it will be simplest if we hear from members of the public first. Give them a chance to weigh in so that we can keep their questions and comments in mind as we have our discussion. After that, I'll be inviting commissioners to make opening statements, and I'll describe that in a moment. And then we'll move on to having discussions under motions. The procedures that we've been talking about, which are voluntary, of course, are to help us organize the most efficient and effective discussion possible. And that means frankly, having as much discussion as possible under specific motions, so we can stay very targeted in our comments. With that, before I do anything else, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes, you had your hand up. Is it a procedural question, or is it one that might be better a little later in the discussion?
Uh, the question I have is about the Coronado Bridge. Did we just uh, get any information on whether that becomes a connector for um, like Coronado to be part of one of the districts that's in, let's say, Point Loma or so forth? Does that connect?
It's a great question. And it's one I'd rather take up a little later in the process, if that's okay.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, Commissioner Inman?
Yes, I was uh, thinking that it might make sense for the public as well as commissioners, if we could hear the motions that created these. I know Alex referred to various parts of them, but we didn't actually specifically see the motions that were associated with creating these maps. Do we have that?
Do we have this available? Yes, we do. So in that, um, how hard? So why why don't we bring that up um, and display it while we're taking public comment? If that's okay? All right. So with that, um, I'd be negligent in not thanking Alex and the team for all this impressive work, but I'll dispense with overthinking, as well as Commissioner Inman uh, for his remarks. And especially, and I will continue to reinforce this throughout the meeting tonight, reminding everyone involved in tonight's meeting about the importance of the statutory criteria, and that is the basis for our discussion. So let's hear from members of the public. David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda?
Thank you, Chair Baim. We have five speakers who have requested to address the commission in person, and seven who have requested to address the commission remotely. Once we've heard from them, I will also check for additional speakers uh, by requesting to speak by raising physical or virtual hand. I'll begin by calling the in-person speakers who have submitted a request to speak. When your name is called, please proceed to the podium and state your name for the record if you choose to do so before beginning your comments. You'll have three minutes to address the commission, and you'll see the timer on the screen behind the dais. Begin with Jennifer Jeffries, followed by Letitia Maldonado-Stamos.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the civic duty you're performing. I'm from Fallbrook, and the way I would characterize, and I do characterize your work, is thoughtful, thorough, holistic, open-minded, and rational. So I offer that. Um, a couple of thoughts today. First of all, we appreciate Map One, Three, and Four. Uh, we very much want to remain with our community of interest, with Oceanside, Vista, the seventy-eight and seventy-six corridor. So I appreciate that look. Um, I'm wondering if there's interest in testing the idea of Carlsbad joining their colleagues in Encinitas and testing how Escondido could join the North County area. I say that because I've lived in Salona Beach, Del Mar, Lucadia, Carlsbad. I now live in Fallbrook. I retired from Cal State San Marcos after seventeen years. I know the seventy-eight very well. And I think there might be some benefit in considering that. I don't know how the figures would play out, but it might be interesting to take that look. Lastly, I'm going to be interested in understanding the intersection of preserving community interest. There's all, you know, there's a sixty-seven percent, a thirty-four percent, a fifty-six percent, how that gets put into the mix as you work on these pieces of clay that you're trying to shape. So I offer those comments uh, to encourage you along your way and to continue with the good work you're doing, and appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Ortiz, Stephanie Ortiz will be followed by Lily and Serrano if you're here, if not Maria Nunez, I'm sorry. Uh, this is Letitia Maldonado-Stamos.
Yes, yes.
Followed by Stephanie Ortiz, if you're here, if not Lily and Serrano. Followed by Stephanie Ortiz, if you're here, if not Lily and Serrano, please begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Letitia Maldonado-Stamos and I live in Fallbrook, California. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I also presented comments at your Vista meeting a few weeks ago, but felt compelled to drive from one end of San Diego County to the other at peak commute hours, it took us two hours to get here, to urge you all not to move greater Fallbrook area, which includes Bonzel, Rainbow, uh, Fallbrook, of course, Duluth, out of District Five. In other words, I strongly disagree with Map Number Two. Fallbrook has the largest population of any unincorporated community in the county and regrew almost as much as Oceanside and Escondido in the twenty-twenty census. Our relationship with Oceanside, Escondido, San Marcos and Vista is one that includes economics, social, cultural and familial connections that run deep and have done so for generations. We want to stay with those cities. We also have a Latino population of nearly fifty percent, so I want to speak on that issue as well. The Latino voters in North County must be given their due consideration in developing the new districts. In my decades living in Fallbrook, there has never been a supervisor that we can say has been a candidate of our choice. By keeping Escondido out of North County, that greatly dilutes our ability to have needed voting power to elect a supervisor who would properly represent the large minority populations of North County. This is a protected class that requires the commission's focused attention. I do not have tech savvy to create a map. In fact, it took me over an hour of trying to work the tool to move six blocks from one district to another and then to lose it when I tried to save the map. So, um, it's not a regular person-friendly tool, but I do have a map that I'd like to submit. And I ask Alex to please take this map and what I've done here is I've taken out Carlsbad and I've included Escondido because Carlsbad is much more like Encinitas and Escondido is much more like the other cities that we've been talking about. You know, and I, am I out of time? I don't see the.
It's thirty seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see the time up there. So I want to say one more thing that, um, I'm, I'm, I really had difficulty trying to figure out how to say this without offending anyone. So I'm just going to say that this is my personal opinion. I think it's important for, um, the commission to consider and Alex, as he's doing these maps, that the Latino vote should not be a matter of choosing between Escondido being in District Five or Fallbrook being in District Five. We need to have both of them because that's one community of interest that we're all involved with. So I appreciate your time. I appreciate your service and I appreciate your attention. Thank you very much.
I think one of the staff members is available to receive that map. So Stephanie Ortiz, if you're here, or Lily and Serrano?
Hi there. Good evening. My name is Stephanie. I'm a resident of Fallbrook for more than twenty years, board member of a special district in town and longtime community advocate and organizer, but I'm here as an individual today. I'm here to urge the independent redistricting commission to stand on the right side of history and keep both Fallbrook and Escondido together in District Five. Representation has been an issue locally and nationally since the inception of this country. We are at a pivotal and changing moment in history where groups that have formerly been excluded, like Indigenous and Black people of color, are demanding our voices to no longer be diluted or silenced. This political process of electing county supervisors is part of that movement. In two thousand and eighteen, alongside a dedicated grassroots effort of organizing, our town participated for two years in the redistricting process. We attended hearings just like these and eventually successfully advocated for five board maps include majority Latino districts. We took part of a community, uh, we took part in a popular education campaign to learn this complex process, submit a map that would best represent the protected class, including the Latino and Latina votes. This is a beautiful example of collective power and political participation. This is unheard of in all of Fallbrook's history despite Latinos being forty-nine percent of the population, which is about seventeen thousand people. Something so basic as having representatives, bi-cultural and diverse representatives at that. We are able to elect four new representatives due to these efforts. At the time, we received immense support from the experiences of our neighbors in Vista, Oceanside and Escondido. They participated in the same process previously and supported Fallbrook each step of the way, arranging here, uh, along the way, I mean, um, throughout the hearing processes and helping us drop community maps. Having the experience of growing up in North County, farm workers and diverse multicultural communities thrive in all of these cities mentioned. In addition, we all have engaged in transportation, healthcare, economy, education, accessibility issues and therefore should be kept in the same district, District Five. As communities with large immigrant populations, we are no stranger to the ways that ICE checkpoints heavily impact us all. We find safety in building networks of support together to defend our rights with dignity. Let's keep the protected communities of interest, including Escondido and Fallbrook, together and uphold the California Voting Rights Act. So we'd like to see a map that reflects this. Thank you.
Thank you. Lily and Serrano, followed by Maria Nunez.
Good evening. My name is Lily and Serrano and I'm an Escondido resident. Um, today I'm here and this is the second time that I addressed the the commission uh, because yesterday when I first saw the the draft maps, I was, uh, personally very disappointed because I don't feel that any of the drafts uh, really reflect my community of interest as an Escondido resident. Uh, but more importantly, um, I don't think any of them do a really good job of, um, protecting Latinos in North County as a voting, uh, block. Um, I appreciate the effort. I know that it's hard to draw a map of a community that you might not be familiar with. And that's why I joined my my colleagues and drive, uh, two hours, uh, to come to the other side of our county, uh, to ensure that that we share with your expertise. Uh, we are experts in our community. Um, all of us have worked in, uh, redistricting for our, uh, school boards or, um, or city councils, our health boards, our fire boards. Um, I have the opportunity to look at, um, uh, at the map that was just submitted, sorry. Um, and I I think it's more reflective of what my community of interest that it is. Um, as as Conde the resident, I do drive along the seventy-eights, uh, visiting specifically the cities of San Marcos, Vista and Oceanside. Um, also, we do a lot of work, um, in the communities, uh, specifically work with immigrant communities, Spanish-speaking communities in the community of Fallbrook, um, Duluth, Rainbow, Pala, Palma and Valley Center. A map that will unite all of those communities in under one district uh, will be very important not just to give us the opportunity, uh, to elect, uh, a supervisor that will truly care and truly um, represent our communities, but it will also allow us to stay together. Um, you see, we share a lot, we we share the same community clinics, we share grocery stores, we share, um, just street fairs. We are one big community. I cannot think of many times where I actually have driven from Escondido to Carlsbad. Um, as much as as, I mean, we would all love to see a one big district. I understand that because of populations, we have to, um, make some cuts. So I'm asking you to drop Carlsbad from District Five to include as much of the unincorporated areas of Fallbrook, um, Pala, Palma and Valley Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final in-person speaker is Maria Nunez.
Uh, good evening. Buenas tardes, uh, Commissioners. My name is Maria Nunez. I am a resident of the city of San Marcos. And I also have the, um, honor of representing in the city of San Marcos. I represent, uh, District One in the city council. And District One is a majority Latino district. And this is the second time that I also address this commission. I also drove here from the city of San Marcos uh, because this is very important for me. Um, it's important for me to, uh, remind the commissioners and to urge you to, uh, keep in mind that in North County, we are requesting this commission to keep the seventy-eight corridor intact. We would like to see the city of Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, Oceanside and the rural communities, specifically Fallbrook, to remain, to stay in District Five. Um, I also do want to ask this, uh, commission a procedural question and a request. Um, as we discuss these draft maps or any maps that are presented to this commission, uh, particularly as the commissioners discuss what's presented, it would be helpful to me and I think to other members of the public, if possible, to present images of those maps that are being referenced. For those of us that are here, when a map is referenced, um, it's hard for us visually to see what is being discussed, so I do request that the, uh, commission consider that. And also the individuals that are participating via Zoom to also have the same access to uh, the visual representation that's being, um, referenced. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I'll now move to our remote participants. I will say that we have fifty-three attendees who are participating remotely, so I'm going to ask those individuals who have requested to speak in advance to please raise a virtual hand. It will make it easier for me to find you and I will attempt to call on you first. Justin Domicio, Kevin Stevenson, Veronica Hernandez, Janet Mulder, Maria Gomez, Luis Montero Adams, Matt Stockton and Cynthia Pias. Begin with Justin Domicio. You'll see or hear a notification that you've been unmuted. You have three minutes to address the commission.
So I want to kind of follow up on what the previous two speakers said because I agree with everything they said and I just want to build on that. As a low-income resident who went to high school in Escondido, Vista and in Oceanside, I personally think that I have more in common with my, uh, brothers, sisters and non-binary pals in Fallbrook and in unincorporated areas in Palma and and Escondido than I do with Carlsbad. Um, mainly because I literally cannot afford to live in Carlsbad and I don't know anyone my age, I'm twenty-five, y'all can't see me, that can afford to live in Carlsbad without selling a kidney and maybe making a deal with an unholy minion. Uh, my personal experience, even as a college grad, so I'm going to urge that we have one supervisor to address our needs so more young people can participate in our real estate uh, economy by being able to, you know, petition the Board of Supervisors, one supervisor for issues of zoning, access, uh, to developments and other issues that will affect us when we're ready to financially and emotionally own homes one day, maybe. I dare to dream. Um, but that is a dream I have and I think it would be easier if we had a more coherent Board of Supervisors instead of having to go between districts and across political lines potentially or anything to that effect. I just think on a resource level for the average person that just got out of college or or the average retiree in in our backyard, we kind of want things to be a little bit more simple because the government should work for everyone regardless of what you identify as or what you don't. And so I'm hoping that you'll consider and give greater weight, uh, to a more cohesive, uh, map that holds together my community. I know Escondido like the back of my hand. I can walk through the streets blind and I think I would get where I need to get. Um, and the same is true of San Marcos and and Vista and Oceanside. I don't know Carlsbad. I somewhat know Fallbrook, but that's because of my wilder high school days, but I feel a kinship to them. I feel like even my neighbors that I might not agree with on on many, many issues, we all have a North County vibe. We all have a North County understanding. Uh, and we all have an appreciation that we can find, uh, parking at Target, whereas, uh, the folks in in downtown San Diego, oh, I'm a pray for all of y'all. Finding parking is impossible. Um, but I'd like to keep North County, North County, and so I'm hoping that we can add Escondido. Um, because I've always thought they were with us and they should be with us at every level. Thank you.
Thank you. Kev. Kevin Stevenson, you have three minutes to address the commission.
Hi, uh, yeah, so I'd just like to repeat the same sentiment that, uh, Justin Maria, um, said. Basically that, um, I really do think that Escondido should be in the same district as Oceanside, San Marcos, Vista, Fallbrook, Palma Valley, et cetera, because like they said, I really do think that Escondido shares more in common with communities like Oceanside and San Marcos and Fallbrook a lot more so than communities like Carlsbad and Encinitas. I mean, I I mean, I can go into details about like the wealth, uh, the wealth gap and the demographics, but I I mean, just thinking about it logically, I, as someone who lives in Escondido, I've never understood why with the current map, we're in a, in the same district as Encinitas, but not the same district as San Marcos. It's just never made any sense to me because San Marcos and Escondido, I literally think of twin cities in a sense. So, um, just to repeat a similar sentiment, uh, I would like to see, uh, Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos, Escondido, so the entire, you know, Highway seventy-eight corridor minus Carlsbad in the same district. Uh, and then also include Fallbrook, Bonzel, Rainbow, uh, Paula and, you know, neighboring communities. Um, so, uh, that's my two cents. I, you know, don't want to be too redundant. Uh, but I just want to echo the same sentiment because, uh, I think it is a general theme that a lot of constituents up here in North County, um, tend to feel, tend to relate to. So, uh, anyways, I'm going to stop rambling. That's pretty much all I have to say on this. Uh, yeah, don't separate North County. Keep them together. Thank you.
Thank you. Veronica Hernandez, you have three minutes to address the commission.
Hello, Chair and Commissions, um, Commission members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Veronica Hernandez. I speak to you this evening as a very involved parent at our schools and our community and as a North County resident. North County compromising, um, Duluth, Rainbow, Fallbrook, Bonzel, Valley Center, Vista, Oceanside, San Marcos, Escondido. Um, they share many resources such as health districts, law enforcement, transportation, just to name a few. We also share lots of concerns such as fire safety. We have built a community within the North County region. We find it crucial for one supervisor to advocate for this community and advocate that will take into consideration our needs and our well-being. Separating our unincorporated areas of Fallbrook from North County can be detrimental and tear apart years' worth of hard work and relationships created. Other relationship to these other North County cities is crucial. Another concern I have is that none of the proposed maps include Escondido as being moved to District Five. As a Latino voter, our voices are better heard by including this city and their Latino population representation. I strongly urge you to keep our communities' interests in mind and advocate for keeping our communities together. Help us maintain a unified North County community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Maria, you have three minutes to address the commission. Maria, you may need to unmute yourself. Clicking the unmute button on Zoom. My side you're showing is being muted. Maria, we still can't hear you. Okay, I'm going to come back to you, Maria. I'm going to go to Luis. You have three minutes to address the commission.
Good afternoon, uh, Commissioners. My name is Luis Montero Adams. My pronouns are he, him, his, and I am speaking on behalf of the San Diego LGBT Community Center. After reviewing the draft maps posted by the, on the IRC website, it is the center's belief that portions of the way District Two is drawn in Map One provide the best opportunity to continue to provide the LGBTQ community a strong empowerment district while also empowering our neighborhood, neighboring communities. To be clear, we are not advocating for the totality of Map One, just a portion of the way District Two is drawn in Map One. For the purpose of defining the LGBTQ coys' physical boundaries, I would like to use the following freeways: the eight to the north, the five to the west, ninety-four to the south and fifteen to the east. We would also like to include the neighborhood of downtown San Diego. Since the last redistricting cycle in two thousand and eleven, the San Diego LGBT Community Center has consistently promoted voter registration and political participation within the LGBTQ community. And through our efforts, we have built a universe of over forty thousand registered voters in the county of San Diego. Although we cannot definitively say that every member of our supporter database identifies as a member of the LGBTQ community, mapping their residences by using their voter registration addresses shows us that over twenty percent of shows us that over twenty percent of these LGBTQ voters live within the small area that we are advocating for. The LGBTQ community was notably absent from the 2020 census data collection, though it was named as a hard-to-count community, which is why I am here tonight to advocate for this community of interest and share our data. San Diego has been a leader in the LGBTQ political engagement and redistricting for the past three decades, where San Diego City Council District Three was one of the first districts in the country to be developed in order to empower the LGBTQ community. Today, we ask that you not divide the LGBTQ community of interest and include the previously defined areas as part of a single district. Thank you for your time.
Cynthia?
Hello, I'm Cynthia Paz with the Registrar of Voters Office. As the department responsible for conducting elections for the county and providing the education and outreach to the public, I would ask that you take the following into consideration. My comments do not pertain to how the various draft boundary maps have been drawn, but how the districts are numbered. It appears that the number assignment was determined going from south to north. After the final boundary map is laid out, the commission should consider labeling each district number based on the amount of geographic overlap that exists with the current 2010 supervisory boundaries to reduce voter confusion and to retain community identity. For example, in the draft map scenario two, District Two, I would draw your attention to Page Five overlaid map. This map shows that there are no shared boundaries. Therefore, voters with the current boundary of District Two, this will mean that no members of the public in the current District Two will reside in the new District Two. This could simply be resolved by numbering each district using the geographic overlap of the current district. A follow-up letter will be sent to better demonstrate the concerns on why it is important to be thoughtful on how the districts are numbered. Thank you.
Thank you. Going back to Maria. Maria, you have three minutes to address the commission. I'm still showing you as being muted. You may need to, there you go, three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Maria Gomez, and I live in North County, San Diego, an incorporate area of Fallbrook. As a retired educator and active community volunteer in several organizations, I have some concerns with the redistricting efforts and its impact on North County and Fallbrook in particular. I'm glad to see some maps up for review that keeps Fallbrook in District Five along with Vista, San Marcos, and Oceanside. But I'm sad to see that in many, Escondido is taken out of District Five. The seventy-eight corridor of these cities, which includes Escondido, share a strong economic and political-cultural bond such as healthcare, access to higher education, and transportation. Fallbrook, and most definitely as well as Escondido, needs to remain in the Greater North County Latino communities of interest, which is District Five, to do otherwise would squelch our voices and our vote. Thank you for your time and for your listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to any more remote speakers, is there any other member of the public who did not address the commission earlier who would like to come forward and address the commission now? Not seeing any movement in the chamber, that concludes those present who have requested to speak. If there is anybody participating remotely at this point who would like to address the commission, you're welcome to raise a virtual hand whether or not you have submitted an advanced request. Begin with Mary Lee Ramirez. Should hear a notification that you've been unmuted. You have three minutes to address the commission.
Good evening. My name is Mary Lee Ramirez. I am a resident of Coronado. I want to thank the commissioners for their hard work and for listening to the community members during these past few months, as shown in draft number two. I thank you so much for taking the time to hear from the public today. I want to share my perspective on Coronado's place on the supervisory map. The main issue related to Coronado is how our island is connected to the rest of San Diego County. In the current supervisory map, our community is included with South Bay cities that share little in common with residents on the Coronado Peninsula. However, our community should be paired with neighborhoods like downtown, Point Loma, Pacific Beach, and La Jolla. These neighborhoods have a lot in common with Coronado, especially in tourism and hospitality industries and short-term vacation rentals. Also, very important to consider our climate crisis coastal issues like ocean water pollution, temperature changes, sea level rise, and marine life. Coronado, Point Loma, Pacific Beach also have a large retired military community. So I hope that the county commission will strongly consider the interest we share with these communities by connecting us through the ferry route to downtown San Diego. The ferry route will allow us to remain in District Two and also allowing the historic Barrio Logan, which is highly Latino, to be part of District One. I thank you so much for listening to the public and good luck with this process.
Thank you. Kate Schwartz-Friedes, you have three minutes to address the commission.
Thank you so much, commissioners. Can you hear me? Yes.
We can hear you.
Thank you, commissioners. I just removed my earbuds as I wasn't receiving a response. My name is Kate Schwartz, and I reside in the community of Fallbrook. Our community of Fallbrook has been a part of North County for longer than the twenty-one years I have lived here. We no longer have a hospital and thus share vital resources to provide for our communities of Fallbrook, Bonzel, Rainbow, Dulles, including Camp Pendleton. As a trustee on the Fallbrook Regional Health District Board, I'm able to inform you that we share safety and emergency services with our North County Fire Protection District, CAL FIRE, our local federally qualified health centers in Fallbrook and Vista, hospital services of Tri-City, Palomar Hospital, and the Twenty-four Hour Urgent Care Service in San Marcos. We have coordinated services during the pandemic with our partners throughout North County and ensured through these partnerships the ability to provide our communities with local testing and vaccine services. Our communities utilize the educational services of community colleges located in San Marcos and Oceanside, as well as the CAL State University San Marcos. We share our agricultural roots with the communities of Escondido, Vista, Oceanside, and San Marcos. We share similar fire safety concerns with our North County neighbors as well as water resource needs. And we share resources for our social services through combined health and human service offices located in Fallbrook, Escondido, Vista, and Oceanside. Our homelessness programming is typically offered through Escondido, Vista, and Oceanside. Our social identity is closely connected to being part of North County. We have no service or working relationships with East County communities or the districts of D-two or D-four that I'm aware of. Most of our communities sit on the west side of the I-15 with major use corridors of the fifteen, seventy-six, seventy-eight, and the three ninety-five. As a portion of Carlsbad is included in our D-five, I would add that this community shares the least commonality with our North inland communities. I would request that the commissioners consider a new draft map that would place Carlsbad with its coastal neighbors, which I believe would better serve that community's needs. Escondido has far more in common with North County and our inland areas than any of the coastal communities such as Carlsbad. Our roadways typically require maintenance and updating for safety, and we've advocated in our inland areas for our desperate need for public transit within our communities. Most of our community members traditionally have commuted for their employment to either San Diego or other North County communities. Thank you so much for your hard work, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Miguel Gaska, you have three minutes to address the commission.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Commissioner and commissioners and Chair. My name's Miguel Gaska. I live at nineteen oh four Wilt Road in Fallbrook, along with my lovely wife Sue. Background is civil engineering, water supply, and waste treatment. I have a small business that supports the Air Force on bedding facilities, industrial laboratories, housing, that kind of thing. For full disclosure, I sit as on the Board of Directors of Rainbow Municipal Water District, the Vice President of the Board. From a personal standpoint, I can tell you that my wife and I, what we don't do in Fallbrook from a shopping or healthcare standpoint, we do in Vista, I care, other type of things. Any other additional shopping we got to do is either in Vista, Oceanside, or Escondido. The, you know, we try to support North County as much as we can. I'd like to give you some data points from the standpoint, I'm not speaking for the district, but to give you some insight into the close relationships up and down the corridor. We provide water and waste treatment services to Bonzel, Fallbrook, and Rainbow. The wastewater that we collect is actually treated by the waste treatment plant of the city of Oceanside. We have agreements with Vista Irrigation District to get water when we need it. We have agreements with Valley Center to support different contractors when they're doing development. If they can't provide waste treatment, we provide that service. If they can't provide water, we provide that service, and vice versa. We're very closely aligned. And I'll admit that at times we steal employees from each other. That's how close the relationship is. Because they come and they leave, and they come back again. A couple of important items here recently to show our close coordination, community-wise. If you haven't heard about it, yeah, I know. We got a hell hydrant that is a joint venture of North County Fire and CAL FIRE. And we're also looking at a central center for County Sheriff.
Miguel, I'm afraid your time is expired. Do you want to wrap up?
Yes, sir. Finally, I'd just like to say, in looking at the maps, I think Map One and Three look pretty good. I don't quite understand the sweep on Map Two as it drops all the way down to the lower part of the county. And I think that the maps that you did present initially, that new look that stretched all the way across was interesting, but I didn't have any time to evaluate it, so I can't really give you a comment. I can just say it looks kind of interesting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to have to cut you off out of fairness to the other speakers. Thank you. Shirley Anderson, you have three minutes to address the commission.
Hi, my name is Shirley Anderson, and I have lived in District Five for over ten years. I live in Carlsbad. And when you say Tri-City Hospital, it refers to Oceanside, Vista, and Carlsbad. My taxes go to Tri-City Hospital, as most of Carlsbad citizens do. Everything I do, I do in Oceanside, Vista, or San Marcos, and Escondido. I can't even tell you the last time I was in Encinitas. So everything that I look for as far as recreation, friends, community, I look north. One of the things I did notice on the proposed maps is possibly taking a closer look to a large part of the seventy-eight of unincorporated area with a huge increase in population, that this area might also be included in D-five. But I certainly would be lost to think that I would no longer be in District Five and that I'd have a lack of representation to District Hospital where I pay taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Vargas, you have three minutes to address the commission.
Hello, folks. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Awesome, awesome. So my name is Juan Vargas. I'm a resident of Escondido. I'm raising my family here. I'm planning on pretty much being here until I die. But today, I was able to see the maps that were presented. And overall, I still feel pretty disappointed. There was only one map that sort of included all of the representation pertaining to the seventy-eight corridor, but it did lack crucial communities such as Fallbrook and other rural areas. So I think it's just like everybody else that has eloquently spoken on the subject of keeping the seventy-eight corridor together, keeping these communities of interest together. I'm going to go ahead and just side with all of the remarks that have already happened. Escondido is the gateway to the seventy-eight corridor and not including it within this, it's the same district as our brothers and sisters in San Marcos, Vista, and the areas around would be a mistake. It's also very interesting that I feel like there's been a pretty adamant emphasis in keeping all the South City communities together. And I feel like maybe the same energy, I mean, we should consider kind of thinking the same way about North County as we do South County. So I just find it very interesting that there was two maps that were essentially keeping a lot of the communities in South County the same, but when it came to North County and the inclusion of Escondido within the seventy-eight corridor, there's all this commotion, I guess. So just a thought. Also, there was a comment that there was one map that tended to call, I heard the specific word of the seventy-eight being a border between two different districts. And I think, again, the seventy-eight should be considered a corridor, not exactly a border to split districts in two because, as many have said, a lot of what people do in North County includes Escondido and includes a lot of the cities in the seventy-eight corridor. So, but thank you so much for all the time you've put into doing this. But I think it's very crucial and important to keep the seventy-eight corridor intact within one district. And yeah, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Misty and Tim Ohealy, you have three minutes to address the commission. You may need to unmute yourself. Misty and Tim Ohealy?
Speaking. Can you hear me okay?
Here you now.
All right. Thank you. My name's Tim Ohealy. I live in Carlsbad. I'm a Marine Corps veteran. I'm very adamant about the veterans' lack of representation and the splitting of veterans as a group. And I think the best map I have seen thus far has been the one that includes Escondido, Vista, Carlsbad, Oceanside, San Marcos. I really feel very strongly, and I know I'm active in the veterans' community. We all come from that community. The active-duty military on Camp Pendleton, whether it's Marines or other services or Navy as well, they all are either living, the ones that are not on base, live in those communities. So there's a part of the map to the north of Oceanside that doesn't seem to be incorporated, and if I'm not mistaken, that's Camp Pendleton. Strongly believe that that should be part. They are a They are a cohesive part of this community, this community of five cities. Now, I've lived here fifteen, twenty years and I I probably go back and with my involvement in Carlsbad before most of you were born, but it'll be back in the fifties. And Carlsbad, Oceanside, Vista and Escondido, I mean, I've seen them grow. And it they're 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 one and the same. And they share, they share the active duty military and the veterans. We have one of the largest veteran populations and active duty military populations in the United States. And I think we should be given a voice, a unified voice to speak. And to have somebody who's serving on Camp Pendleton and maybe living in Carlsbad, as many of my neighbors are living here, work are active duty or live in Oceanside or Vista, they're not sure what district they're in. And they're they, because of the unique nature of the military, they are more, their time, their their involvement is more heavily involved than just the average eight to five day. I strongly urge you to incorporate the the five cities I've just spoken about and the additional part that was eliminated into District Five. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Frew, you have three minutes to address the commission. Tom, you may need to unmute yourself.
Hello, thank you for, thank you for these thoughtful maps that you've provided. I've studied them. My name is Tom Frew. I'm a volunteer historian with the Fallbrook Historical Society. I enjoy doing that as a retired person. And I am struck by in my research, how Fallbrook and Escondido and Oceanside, we our communities all grew up together for the past one hundred and twenty years. We've shared newspapers, medical services, law enforcement services for more than a century and agriculture, especially agricultural. So you've you've done some good work here with the maps. But I, but the comments here tonight, I I urge you to to try a little harder. I think we can improve on these. Like to see the community, greater greater Fallbrook included with Escondido, Vista and Oceanside. I think we can make that work and I yield the balance of my time.
Thank you. Shirley Anderson, I know I called on you earlier, but now I'm wondering if I cut you off before you were done with your comments. Is that why your hand is still up?
No, I'm sorry. I'll take it down.
Okay, thank you. Any other participants remotely who would like to address the commission, you're welcome to do so by pressing the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any additional hands, that concludes public testimony on this item, Chair Beam.
Thank you very much, David. Thank you to members of the public. And I hate singling out too many people, but I will single out again. Those active and retired members of military service, community activists, everyone who's called in and particularly those who've joined us in person, driving such a long way. Having driven that drive any number of times, even to farther points north, all I can offer is if you'd like, what kept me awake on my return trips at night was my then-five-year-old singing very carefully through Hey Jude and asking me for each lyric to make sure it was right. If you need that, I'm happy to put you in touch with him. All right. I want to turn in just a moment to Commissioner's statements and then we'll go into some motions to discuss more in detail. As we did last week, we'll begin with Commissioner's statements of no more than two minutes to open the discussions. Then we'll turn to motions on each map with the objective to provide flow with directions for revision or possible changes. The RC can discuss and vote on each motion, including comments taken from the first go around of any commissioners wishing to make a statement. I would ask commissioners to bear in mind throughout the discussion that for the instructions issued tonight, Flow Analytics has very limited time and capacity to refine the maps before they get to the deadline for posting them, which is Monday, this coming Monday. So anything we give them tonight, they have to turn around in order for the map to be posted on October twenty-fifth. More on the reasons for that, but I think most commissioners are familiar with the legal requirement for the seven-day posting before the draft map public hearing. I'll explain that in more detail later. So let me ask for each commissioner, if you're so inclined, to offer a public statement primarily so commissioners and members of the public have a better idea about how we could approach discussions, here's some common questions, common concerns, common points of preference as we move forward. The statements could include identification of at least one preferred draft map, but ideally no more than three. Staff is prepared to record and display this information from your opening statements upon request. Statements, of course, could also include reasons why a particular draft map is or is not preferred based on statutory criteria, and I will continue to emphasize that to my fellow commissioners, as well as any other succinct and relevant comments. With that, I'm going to ask David Hall, our clerk, to call in commissioners at random. It is perfectly permissible to pass or to say I don't have a statement, but I'd like this to be as open and free as possible. So David, could you please call in commissioners at random for statements of no more than two minutes?
Thank you, Chair Beam. I did create a list with the randomizer that begins with Commissioner Russ.
Number one, great. Thank you very much. Of the four of the four maps, I was very disappointed that only one included Escondido in that seventy-eight corridor. I feel like that's that Escondido is very much a linchpin on the eastern terminal of the of the seventy-eight. But I also realized that you cannot have Escondido, Carlsbad, and then all that area in the northwest quadrant, including Fallbrook and Bonsole and Rainbow, et cetera. You can't have them because Escondido has a population of about one hundred and fifty-two thousand and Carlsbad has a population of about one hundred and fifteen thousand. If you do eliminate Carlsbad from that that aggregation of Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos and Escondido, and then include all of that unincorporated area up in the upper northwest quadrant, I ran that model and I think I did it right in which I included Escondido, Oceanside, San Marcos, Vista, Fallbrook, Bonsole, Hidden Meadows, North County Metro, Pendleton, Deluze, Rainbow, Twin Oaks. And if I do that, then the total population is six hundred and sixty-four thousand, very close to our to our our bogey of six hundred and sixty. So you can't have you can't have the northwest quadrant in 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 District Five and and keep Carlsbad. Carlsbad, I feel, also has has quite a bit in common with the coastal communities. To be sure, I don't live there. I heard loud and clear the Carlsbad residents tonight and and I certainly want to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Enman.
Thank you. And first, I want to say the public input is much appreciated and definitely very valuable and useful as Commissioner Russell taken into account. My preferred map is map two. And the reason I preferred map two is because it does preserve a lot of the communities of interest we've talked about in the North County. And I would like to mention the fact that with a configuration as in District Two, you would potentially have two supervisors to represent the North County that would work together. You would have an incorporated area, the seventy-eight corridor with a supervisor, as well as a supervisor that would work with the the incorporated area, as everybody said, because it was a closer relationship. So instead of just having one supervisor to represent them, you would end up with two supervisors in that North County area. Map two also has a central coastal district. It also preserves the districts along the southern border that we've been looking for. And so a motion, if I were to make a motion, there are some changes to District Two that potentially could happen. Another motion, though, that I do believe is called for is one where we try to move Carlsbad into a coastal district and see what that looks like because we have not done that yet. So I think that that would be an important motion to move forward with. My least favorite map was map number four. Map number four split the East County across too many districts, diluting the rural the rural folks to have an impact. There's only about half a million outside of rural areas. And that would really dilute across three districts. And it also links most of the inland areas to the coastal area, which again, based on community of interest testimony, there's clearly a difference between the inland communities and the coastal communities and the things that they would they would want their supervisor to pay attention to. So most preferred two. I think we need to have a map that looks at Carlsbad moving into a coastal district and my least favorite is four. Thank you.
Commissioner Diaz.
Yes, thank you. I actually have in front of mine the comment that was made by a registrar and I need some clarification on that, on the number assignments for the districts because moving forward, I really want to make sure we're not causing any confusion, especially the general public as they address the specific draft maps. So I would love some clarity on that and I would say that from the motion I made last week, draft map two really captures the intent of that motion. I really appreciate the testimony that we received today regarding not to split Escondido off from the rest of the seventy-eight corridor. And I really tried to make sure in that in that motion to capture what we've heard from the public thus far and and just really trying to maintain those communities of interest. I did look at the deviations and it looked pretty close to zero. Getting it down close enough in in one point two percent in D four seemed no favorable, but I would say I for that district, I do have a separate motion for that district for D four. But as far as North County, I really want to make sure that we're incorporating, if any possible, not splitting the city of Oceanside in any further draft maps coming forward. It just didn't look like it was clear from this map. And let me just see, on draft map two in particular, I just really want to make sure there were no communities that were split within Oceanside and making sure that's intact. Taking into account also the gentleman from the general public or veteran that commented on the need to keep the veteran community intact as well. So anyway, I I would really like to support draft map two, but again, I don't think that I think we could still work with with this a little bit and I want to give flow direction, a further direction. In particular, with incorporating the draft map that was submitted by the public for District Four. As I've mentioned earlier during the meeting, that I really think that we could probably consider that map and it just I just would like to visualize it as a draft into draft map.
Visual way of providing a signal that the two minutes is up, so I'll just verbally tell you.
Yeah, so I think as far as the other maps go, I don't know if I can take any direction on that or come come up with a motion at this point. Just commenting on the draft map two. Thank you.
Next in line is Commissioner Serbin, who I believe is still absent, so we'll turn to Commissioner Pons.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say great work by Flow Analytics on the draft maps. Just some great information in there. And the second thing, I commend all of those who drove so far away and those near as well to present your case, so please remain engaged because your voices matter. My comments go straight to Flow Analytics, not to any specific map. But the first question is, do ferry routes count as contiguous connectors between land masses? Because one of the one of the testimonies said something about the Coronado San Diego connector, which is a ferry route. So if I would like for Flow Analytics to just give me a response to that, not now, but maybe later. The second comment is, can we create overlays to depict racial and ethnic population densities for each district and each springboard and graph maps for both blocks and track data? I know that came up at the last meeting and I know it was under consideration, but I think overlays would be very important because when you look at the Pana map that was given to us earlier, if you can take that illustration and overlay it onto a DSM model, that'd give us a better appreciation of what how it impacts the probably the springboards under consideration. And the other thing is, I think a lot of a lot of other maps would be submitted using the Community Builder tool tool, which is just a little bit more user friendly. So we created that overlay function. We can take those renderings and overlay them onto either the springboards or some of the draft maps that we're creating. And the last thing is this, can you modify the DSM filter function to combine multiple ethnic and racial populations to get a better appreciation of the BIPOC issues? And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown.
Hello. Yeah, thank you to all of those who came to the meeting and voiced your opinions. I agree. I live in North County and I've been here for many years. And Escondido is definitely a part of the seventy-eight corridor, so I'm gonna push for that in our map to try to get it to balance. It's going to be difficult with the population shifts. But I'm wondering if maybe we can take a look at everything west of the five, maybe in Carlsbad and Oceanside. I don't know if that would give us enough population to to move that into this into the section that has, I'm looking at map three, which is what I think is the best map. And I was wondering if the coastal portion of it could go up and encompass the things west of the five in Carlsbad and Oceanside. That's might be a possibility. I don't know how much of Escondido we can get included, but it might be that we can go out into the Far East County and bring Ramona and Julian down into District Four, maybe. And maybe that would give us the rest of the population that we need to balance out the Escondido addition. Ramona and Julian kind of are attached to Highway Eight more than they are attached to seventy-eight. So that's kind of my thoughts on that, but great job on the on the maps and there we're getting there. We've got a little ways to go, but we're getting there, so. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Henson.
I agree with what all of my colleagues are saying. I think map two is the closest, but it obviously needs some massaging. One of the things that I found interesting tonight with all of the people from North County who came all this way to tell us what your feelings are, is all along we have known that in order to satisfy all of the wants in North County, something was going to have to give because of the population. Early on in this process, we heard a lot from people in Carlsbad and their community of interest was the Carlsbad Airport. And yet I haven't heard any of you tonight mention the Carlsbad Airport as something that you feel you need to have as a central focus of this district that you want to be in. So I think it's it shows us that considering the fact that we have to give and take, that that community of interest is going to take a backseat to the other communities of interest that have to do with. to the other communities of interest that have to do with ethnic background and, and not financial, what am I trying to say, industrial work, transportation issues of the, the two main corridors. So I, I really want to agree with Ken Inman, who said, you know, we just need to take Carlsbad out because it can't, we can't have it all. I had just had one question on the map, and I don't know, Alex, if you could help me with this. But down in the yellow district, which I think clearly responds to the request of the ethnic and immigrant or the refugee communities, there's something that goes over Interstate 805, a little finger that sticks. I can't figure out what that is. I'm sure it's just one, you know what I mean? I'm sure it's just one.
Noted. I can take a look.
Okay, thanks. But I agree, I think if the public looks at these maps, they should feel that we have been listening to them. That's important.
Commissioner Larson.
Thank you. Great job in following our, sometimes a difficult to understand guidance from our commission. So I appreciate the four draft maps very much. I personally prefer Draft Maps Number Two and Number Three. I do feel that the county needs a coastal district along the entire west coast of the county, which is a community of interest in many ways one would define a community of interest. However, based on the public testimony we've heard here in the last several of our meetings, I really have come to understand that the cities of Oceanside and Carlsbad and the city of Imperial Beach can be best served by being in the north and south corridors respectively. I cannot follow Draft Map Number One or Number Four, which splits Escondido from the North County, which goes against so many of our public comments that we've been given. So my best choice is Draft Map Number Two. It keeps Escondido along the Highway 78 corridor with Oceanside and Carlsbad right to Escondido. And makes, I think, a good coastal zone, which will protect the many, many interests of our county that relate to our Pacific Ocean. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Katerina.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Flo, for putting these maps together. Having done some work myself on the district scenario modeler, I know how time consuming it is and I appreciate all the work and the effort. I had hoped that we would see a swap between Escondido and Carlsbad and some of these North County communities. And I think we can, we can hear that in the comments. But nonetheless, I, I think we have to look at the importance of keeping the 78 corridor intact. And this involves the airport in Carlsbad and the surrounding communities on the 78 Vista, San Marcos and, and Escondido. So my favorite map at the moment is Map Two. I don't love it completely, but perhaps we can work on that. I would like to have the BIPOC community that's in District Four. See if we can morph that into the structure in Map Two. I am concerned that there is in District Five, a huge rural component. And I am just concerned that it's too much. I like the idea of a coastal community that incorporates Point Loma and Coronado with some of the other coastal communities, La Jolla up to, to Escondido. I have 34 seconds, so I've got to talk fast. My least favorite map, I think, is Map Four. But I would take Maps One through Three if we could see, if we could swap Carlsbad and Escondido. If we aren't going to keep Carlsbad in the 78 corridor and we really want to have North County and Escondido together, I'd like to see how that looks. But those are my general comments and thank you very much, everyone, and thank you to the public.
Thank you. Co-Vice Chair Katerina. Commissioner Krugliak.
Thank you, and thank you for putting up the timer in the corner. That's very helpful. So my favorite map is Draft Map Two. I think we can drop Draft Map Four. In terms of Draft Map Two, I think there's two directions we could go, which, as everyone has said, we could play with Carlsbad in a coastal district. We could also play with Escondido and I'm, I'm very aware of the fact that we're hearing one voice today about Fallbrook and Boncel. And probably next week, we're going to hear a very different voice that cares a lot more about the airport. And I bet you, we're going to get a lot of people from San Marcos who are talking today that they should be part of Escondido and Fallbrook, saying, actually, I really don't want noise pollution in my backyard. So I encourage us to be careful with weighing what we hear on a particular day as taking it as gospel. So I would love, and I'm also very, you know, the, the military community is, is not as vocal as some of the other communities that we've heard from. But I do take Carlsbad, Oceanside, Vista up to Camp Pendleton seriously in terms of the feedback that we've heard there. So I would love to work off of Map Two and do a couple of scenarios that listen to the feedback that we've heard tonight, both from many voices and in one case, only from one voice, and see where we get from the population perspective. I would like to also throw out to, I apologize for forgetting your name, that you shouldn't have to be a technical expert in order to be able to draw a draft map. I'm very, very glad that you drew, drew one on a piece of paper. We'll make sure that it is incorporated. I encourage anyone to go to districtbuilder.org. That one works at block level groups. It has a little paint functionality. You can go in and just paint districts very easily and submit that too and we'll get it in. I cannot search a trillion websites, but Google makes it very easy for me. We shouldn't have to be technical experts in order to draw maps and the public shouldn't either.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen.
So I really liked the zero deviation map the public put in last time. I think Map Two is opposed to that, so I favor Map Two. I think it meets most of the SOI input that we've received. However, I think we have a difficult decision to make about Escondido. We can't make everybody happy. We can't fit it and get everything else in that everybody has asked for. So I think we should look at both Map Two and Map Three, with Escondido being the prime difference between those two. I would ask that Flow Analytics create versions of Maps Two and Three that do not split some of the cities like Ramona and stuff like that, 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 that kind of got cut apart. So if you would please do that. I'd appreciate that. Regarding the Escondido question, I know it's difficult. But it's, and by the way, I've lived in Carlsbad almost 20 years. I don't think Carlsbad would rather go to the coastal district. I think they'd rather stay in, in 78 corridor. I point out that Escondido has not been part of District Five for the past 10 years. And yet there is still a great deal of affinity and, and work between the 78 cities, even though they're not in the same district. For instance, Innovate 78, that, that's been going along quite well with Escondido being a part of that, even though they're not part of the same supervisor or district. So as I've thought about this very difficult decision and whether Escondido should be in, at, at the, at the cost of losing other, other areas in District Five, I guess my preference or my, I'm leaning more toward Map Two where Escondido, we more, we keep more of the status quo. Because things seem to be working quite well, even though Escondido was not in District Five at the moment. And some of the things we'd have to break apart to make Escondido part of District Five, like sacrificing Fallbrook, Rainbow, those areas, I think would be more painful. So we're going to face pain either way. Those are my thoughts at the moment. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Bame.
Thank you. I'm going to just offer support that a focus initially on Draft Map Two and scenarios from there has two advantages. One is I think we can come up with instructions to flow that are, will be reasonable enough for a quick turnaround. The other part, though, as several commissioners have mentioned, is there are options from expanding that map or expanding on that map, I might say, to let us explore different things, including the inclusion of Escondido in the 78 corridor, the exclusion, exclusion of Carlsbad from that corridor. But at the same time, reverse that and, or come up with a variation on that that might involve those concentric circles from the airport. I do want to associate myself with colleagues on finding a way to incorporate the Panama map, as well as if possible, the map we received tonight into our discussions. But my primary focus and rather than advocating for one or another map tonight is because of that quick turnaround we have for flow, what map would allow us to get the most from flow posted by Monday that would create a constructive and open discussion on November 1st at our first public hearing. Thank you.
Commissioner Dostal.
Thank you. So I really want to thank the public for their comments. That was very helpful. I'd just like to reiterate, as Commissioner Chen just pointed out, District Five is just, we can't fit everything in that everyone wants to put in District Five. So there's going to have to be, either Carlsbad is going to have to give, or Escondido is going to have to give, or those very northern areas are going to, you know, we can't keep them all. It sounds like we're getting kind of a critical mass behind Map Two. So I'll, I'll focus my comments on that, which is that it doesn't really make sense to me, especially with the comments we heard today, that the very northern part of the county is, you know, circles around to be in the same part of the county as Poway. I think they want to stay in North County. I think it makes sense for them to stay in North County. So what I'd like to see is a version of this map with Escondido in, Carlsbad in the, out and include Fallbrook in those northern areas as part of of District Five. In addition, I'd also like to mention that just the comments I read through that we just got. Commissioner Chen mentioned some of the comments, don't split Ramona, don't split Julian, just, you know, keeping those communities together and not using the 78 necessarily as a, as a border, so much as a quarter to the extent we can. And I think that's all I have. Thinking.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
I have been waiting. Great. I'll try to be brief. My preferred map is Map Three, followed closely by Map Two. They're very similar maps with some differences. The reason I like those two maps, and in fact, I think what Commissioner Dostal was just suggesting actually has us looking at Map Three as perhaps the template. But in any case, both of those maps, Three and Two, appear to respond to coy input better in that they keep the immigrant and refugee community together in southeast San Diego. They, they give us, it gives us a border, a south border, southern border district that excludes Coronado and Point Loma. They both draw a coastal district. They both attempt to maintain a North County 78-76 corridor. Map Three has a 78-76 corridor that goes all the way to the northern border. Map Two has that, you know, very compact 78 community of interest that we keep hearing about, that is going to be a difficult thing for us to figure out. Couple of things. While both of those maps draw a coastal district, I think the coastal district that it draws is very problematic. Because in the, in the Solana Beach-Del Mar area, the border is at I-5, and you're talking about a narrow one and a half mile strip. And you're cutting, you're separating Solana Beach and Del Mar, both of which have significant parts of their population east of I-5. And I can guarantee you that all of the people on the east side of Five and Solana Beach and Del Mar consider themselves part of a coastal community, including even further east than there. So I think that's a problem. I think it's a problem in that it is going to make it hard for us to meet one of our criteria, which is, to the extent practical, keep neighborhoods and communities together. These are significant communities that it makes no sense to me to break them up. So it's a misunderstanding of coastal community, especially in that area.
Fairness, I need to mention that the two minutes.
Oh, time is up. Sorry. I had a couple more things, sorry.
Well, with that, that concludes Commissioner's statements.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Commissioners, and especially thank you for the expressions of appreciation again for the public. And I think that's, as you might expect, the unanimous point we all have. It is almost eight o'clock. I am tempted, with the commission's permission, to take a five or 10 minute break. Whatever time we take will be strictly enforced, both to give commissioners a chance to, for comfort, but also to absorb some of the comments that we're taking, because I know everyone was taking quick notes. Is that permissible? Is everyone agreeable to that? Okay. Five or 10 minutes and virtual commissioners, can you? Five, five, five's enough? All right. So we're going to say five. I have 7:58 on at least one clock. So at 8:03, we will reconvene. We are in recess. Thank you. Thank you.
They have such good timing, don't they? Spry.
Commissioners, we will be reconvening less than a minute, so please get back to your desk. Terminals, seats, what have you. Okay, we are coming back from recess. I think we went with Commissioners back. Thank you very much for being on time. Okay. We're going now turn to motions, discussions, and votes. We're going to be looking for motions to provide actionable direction flow about how to refine draft map or maps for future IRC consideration. Again, with due respect for the short period flow has between receiving our directions and posting the revised maps on Monday, October 25th. Commissioners will recall, excuse me, for just one second while I take care of my screen. Commissioners will call the short period before fulfills the statutory requirement that draft maps be posted for seven days before any draft map public hearing, which the IRC has approved for Monday, November 1st. So with that in mind, directions to flow could include motions to move a specific map, draft, or public forward for further consideration, motions to combine parts of a draft map with another draft map, motion to combine parts of a draft map with a map submitted by the public, and motions to change draft map in a specific way, all of which I think we've already been discussing a fair bit. After motion is made, we'll have IRC discussion and voting on that motion. As a reminder, the voluntary procedures we've discussed for map drawing meetings provide the following guidelines. We'll have a time limit of 15 minutes for discussion per motion for a draft map. I'll ensure that each Commissioner has at least one opportunity to comment, which means we're going to keep comments, I hope, fairly short and directed. I may limit the number of comments or the amount of time allowed per Commissioner to accommodate that and to make sure we're dealing with all the issues we need to deal with. Commissioners can request flow to use the DSM tool to evaluate impact of potential changes, although, again, I'll ask that to be relatively limited tonight. And Commissioners can ask flow or other Commissioners or other Commissioners themselves clarifying questions. There will be a vote called, though, after 15 minutes, and I'll ask the Clerk and staff to keep a clock running once we start a motion discussion. Whether that motion passes or fail, I'll then move on to a motion for another draft map or for the same map if there are additional instructions to flow about that map. So in other words, we can take multiple motions on one map if needed. But I also think the way the discussion has been going, we'll be able to group some of that, and I'll look to Commissioner Inman or some steering on that relative to flow's capabilities and what will be the most effective way to present them with discussions. After each draft map has been considered at least once, a new motion may be made regarding any map with a previously failed motion. So in other words, if a motion fails, but something changes in the subsequent discussion, we can take it back up. That motion process repeats and continues until all draft maps have had a passed motion or, under the procedures we've discussed, three motions fail to provide direction on any map, in which case that map is dropped. Before I ask for an initial motion, let me just ask Commissioners if there are any questions about this voluntary procedure. Obviously, we can modify our guidelines if Commissioners feel they're too constraining or if we learn that there's a more efficient way to proceed. But before I ask for motions, let me just ask if there are any questions about procedure and process. And since I know a number of hands are up, I don't want to disrupt that. Not seeing, though, anybody physically raising their hand or muting themselves.
David, so we are taking the maps one at a time? Is that correct?
Yes, although I will already say, if the Commission is interested in one motion, for instance, on Map 2, which I heard a lot of discussion about, before moving to another motion on Map 2, we can proceed that way. Or if we need to have a motion that allows for multiple directions about Map 2 at once, we can proceed that way. And so I'll ask the Commissioner making the motion to keep that in mind, how specific and how many aspects of the motion you want to have. But the general procedure, Commissioner Chen, will be one map per motion, one map at a time. Any other questions or comments about procedure? Good. So with that, let me ask, is there an initial motion to direct flow analytics regarding refinement of any of the maps, public, flow drafted, IRC-directed, or provided by the public for IRC consideration? Okay. The first hand I saw was Commissioner Brown, so I'm going to ask her first. You have a motion? You're muted?
He's doing good, right up to the end here. I have a motion that we should use Map 3 and try to bring Escondido into the District 5 by extending the residents that are west of the 5 in Carlsbad and Oceanside as a possibility or just exchanging it for Carlsbad, period. And if we end up needing more population to do, to bring Escondido in, that we go along the very southern part of that District 5 that's on the map and pick up more residents through there, and that might be Ramona and Julian. I personally am in Valley Center, and in order for me to get to Valley Center, I have to go through Escondido. And that's the same for everything north of where Valley Center is.
I'll ask you, Commissioner Brown? I'll ask you just to keep on the motion for now. Yeah.
So that's, I think that's a motion, is that?
That's a motion.
Okay.
Yeah. Before I ask for a second, let me ask you, Commissioner Brown, I did hear a number of Commissioners referring to Map 2 over Map 3.
Right.
I just wanted to get your take, is the most efficient way to proceed overall to talk about Map 3 before Map 2?
For me, it is.
Okay.
Because I don't think Map 2 hits the spot for me. I think it excludes most of North County, and that shouldn't happen.
Okay. So therefore, let me ask, okay, we'll take that. So I want to respect that I called on her. Is there a second to the motion Commissioner Brown just described? Commissioner Hansen? Okay. So we will start the clock for 15 minutes on the motion, provided, moved by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Hansen, to bring Escondido into District 5 by extending residents west of the 5 in Carlsbad and Oceanside, or exchanging with Carlsbad, or if more population is needed, and I wasn't quite clear on this, go take in part of the southern part of District 5, including Ramona and Julian.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown, did I restate it correctly?
Yes, that sounds-
Okay. So let's, let's start the clock now for the 15 minutes. I'm sorry. Okay. Very good. So I'm going to just take hands as we go on this. So I have Commissioner Diaz, Commissioner Russ, Commissioner Larson, you still want to speak on it? No. Commissioner Pons, Co-Vice Chair Garcia. Good. So Commissioner Diaz, please.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. I really, I was looking at Map 2 as well and reviewing all of that, considering all the public testimony. I think that keeping those North County communities intact, and I support moving Escondido, referring to Map 3, to see if we can, again, see if Carlsbad could either be incorporated in that coastal district or be left in the District 5. But to have Escondido as part of District 5, so if we can modify Map 3 to include Escondido as District 5, I would support that. Again, to point to, for the coastal district, along 5, looking at the map, just trying to see if we can incorporate that Commissioner Garcia said about the communities east of the 5, if that is something we could look into and modify that map of, I don't know where that border or boundary would be, but that, to look at that, to direct flow, to look at that, and if that would change the population deviation for Map 3. The other thing I want to point out is that for District 4, again, referring to Map 3, to modify a bit, that I looked up that yellow area that kind of dipped, like, it looks like a little finger, west of 805, that looks like Birdland, and that it was a hospital there, and that's why it's a huge hospital and complex. So I just want to alert that flow, like, maybe if you could either keep it intact in either the coastal district or District 4, if you leave it in District 4. I'm just trying to, again, that's just a small detail. And I don't know if that would change the population or anything like that. And I also want to look at if the-
Commissioner Diaz?
Sorry.
I'll ask you to try to sum up, because we want to make sure we respect-
Oh, sorry.
Other Commissioners' times within the 15-minute window.
Okay.
Okay, can you hold on one second, please?
I'm done.
Alex, I'm going to, I'm sorry, go ahead and wrap up, please.
I fully consider the Asian-American vote, the community in District, in Map 3, and make sure we're not splitting that right there and keeping that intact. I don't know if Poway-
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, I need further analysis of that. We didn't talk about that during the hearing.
I think we're okay.
Thank you very much. Alex, thank you for posting the map that I hope various people can see, and please feel free to zoom in as we go. At some point before we vote, I will turn to Alex and, in his SPOC hat, Commissioner Inman for comment. All right. With that in mind, Commissioner Russ?
Yes, I'll keep my comments just to the motion. Escondido has a population of about 150,000. So if we add that to District 5, we've got to find 150,000 somewhere else to take away. I doubt very seriously that west of the 5 in Carlsbad, even up in Oceanside, would give us 150,000 people. I do think Commissioner Brown is correct, though, that probably one of the ways to do that is down in District, are we calling that District 2 still, the purple?
Ramona?
District 4, we're calling it District 4 now. Yeah, Ramona, what you're saying, we'll probably have to move that up in order to get those 150,000. Well, the difference between the 150,000 in Escondido and 115,000 in Carlsbad, you know, you're, it's going to be hard to keep Carlsbad in there, because we're going to have to find 150,000 somewhere. I doubt that it's going to be on the west of the 5. I'd be surprised for it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I do think there's advantage in having the screen showing the map, so I'll ask staff to keep us aware of how much time is left on this agenda item. How much is it now? Okay. Ah, there we go. So 9:30 left. Okay, I have, Commissioner Pons, you withdrew. Correct? Okay, so Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Yes, thank you. I'm, so are we amending, is there a friendly amendment to the motion to also include in the coastal district?
It's-
The community east of, you know, Del Mar and Solana Beach east of 5, or not?
Technically, Del Mar is not east of 5.
Okay. Excuse me. Let's, first of all, though, let me see. Commissioner Brown, I assume you're willing to consider friendly amendments as needed?
Yep. Sounds good.
Okay. So, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, do you have a specific idea for amending the motion?
Yes, to create it, to amend or revise the coastal district to include the communities east of 5 that are associated with Solana Beach and Del Mar, that I would identify either because they're, they have, they share school districts, or they're part of the San Diego community planning group, I think is what it's called.
That's District 4, right?
It's currently part of District 4, correct?
Commissioner Brown, is that acceptable?
Yeah, I just don't see how that helps up in District 5 with Escondido and Carlsbad. I mean-
Escondido leaves District 4, right? And it goes to District 5.
Right. So to replace it with-
If I'm understanding Co-Vice Chair Garcia correctly, and I don't mean to speak for you, but I think it's basically picking up your idea, Commissioner Brown, of looking for additional population that would balance out along lines of what Commissioner Russ was discussing. So you'd have Escondido moved into, you, we would ask flow to look at moving Escondido into that district and for balance, see if the pieces can, and ripple effects can shuffle around, including using the eastern, the communities east of I-5 that Co-Vice Chair Garcia described.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Is that okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Commissioner Hansen, is that okay with you? As a friendly amendment? Okay. Okay. It's okay in the motion. Good. Okay. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, did you have anything else short to add, or can we move on? Because I-
Move on.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Thank you. I was just going to comment on this motion. I'm going to propose another motion where we keep Map 3 intact and just ask flow to not separate communities like Ramona and Julian, et cetera. As I said earlier, I don't think Carlsbad, I think Carlsbad would prefer to be part of the 78 corridor rather than a coastal district, and I think changing the status quo by trying to push Escondido into District 5, even though it's going to be very, very difficult, I think is probably too hard, and it comes at too great a cost. So that's, that's, that's my position on this motion, and I will be making a second motion about Map 3. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that. I believe. We have no other requests to speak, so let me turn to Alex or Commissioner Inman if there are any qualifying, clarifying questions you need. On the direction under this motion.
I do have a few questions, but I'll yield to Commissioner Inman first.
Yeah, yeah, Alex, the floor is yours to do with it as you will for at least a short time.
Okay, I just have a couple of quick questions. Uh, I understand the motion and its criteria. Um, the only thing, Commissioner Diaz, I just wanted to zoom in here now that we're showing the map, and if you're able to see this, we're talking about this area right here, correct? And I think this is the idea of potentially changing this. Area to be part of District Four, District, um, Two, correct? So it's not part of District Three?
Is that a census block that we're looking at? It was, it's very difficult to tell.
Um, it's probably multiple. I did not have census blocks turned on because they're quite small. I will turn on, there are the community plan areas, um. There's not one.
Sorry. If it doesn't make a substantial, um. Or significant, uh, deviation of the population target that we're looking for, then I wouldn't worry about it. I'm, I'm just concerned, I, it was just. Something that another commissioner brought up, and I also looked into it too, but I didn't have access to the tool at the time. But I really appreciate you zooming in on certain areas.
Yeah, of course. Um, I think that. Uh, those are my only questions, um. And I, I. Wanted to just quickly thank Commissioner Russ, uh, for the, the information on Escondido, and I can confirm that, that's definitely something we looked at, hundred, about 150,000 Escondido, Carlsbad. Um, much lower, about 40,000 lower, or a little bit less than that. So it is gonna be, you know, something to look into when we make that exchange of those two. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hanson.
I just wanted to comment on, on adding more of. Del Mar and Solana Beach. You go farther south in the coastal region. This coastal region used to stop at Interstate Five. And now it goes all the way to the ocean. So, and you've pulled it back in that area to, to eight oh five. I'm talking about. North Clermont. So if you took that area out of the coastal district, that would give you some. Population to pick up the rest of the area. East of Del Mar and Solana Beach.
Can you, thank you, can you mention that community that you just described one more time by name?
Um, on some of your map, it's North Clermont.
Okay.
University City is now in the coastal district. Up until 10 years ago, the coastal district ended at Interstate Five, which is a northwest corridor that you see on the map. Just inland from La Jolla. Right, right there.
Yep.
And that area used to be. Used to not be in the coastal area. Until 10 years ago.
Thank you for pointing that out. And just so you guys, um, everyone's aware, the borders I just turned on kind of in that light purple or blue, those are the existing 2011.
Right, right, but I'm talking about 10 years ago. I happen to live in that area, so that, why I'm so clever to be able to tell you that.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other comments and wanting to make sure with co-Vice Chair Katerina in particular, I, I kind of spoke over you. Did you have something you wanted to? Okay, very good. Um. Commissioner Diaz. You're muted.
When you zoomed in on that area, Kearney Mesa, just making sure that it's intact within. That single district because Kearney Mesa Convoy District, we've heard public testimony that the convoy district. Convoy Street is very important for the Asian American community. Uh, business corridor, so please keep that intact. If you're ever doing any. Moving around of, um, lines, keep that in, in mind. Thank you.
Good for the record. We have just about expired, had our 15 minutes from this item expired, so I'm going to call for a vote on the motion. Do we have it? So we'll put the motion up on the screen. Don't have it on, ready? Okay. So. I'm gonna read it again. I'm not sure what's. Going on the screen now, so, oh, there we go. No, okay, so while they type it up. Commissioner Brown, do you want to reread it, or do you want me to?
You can read it, Dave.
Okay, and you, and you correct me if I'm wrong, regarding map three. Bring Escondido into District Five. By extending residents west of five. In Carlsbad and Oceanside. Or. Exchanging with Carlsbad. Or if more population is needed. Go to the southern part of District Five to pick up more, including Ramona and Julian. And then this additional part per the friendly amendment. As well as possibly, as well as, uh. Solana Beach and Del Mar communities east of five.
Right, as being part of the coastal.
Right. Okay. Good. Um, Commissioner Brown, that's accurate enough?
Yeah, that sounds good. Hopefully it'll balance out, but.
Okay, Commissioner Hanson, accurate enough? Very good. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, I wanted to make sure I captured the last part. Good. So with that, David, may we please call the roll for a vote? Are you not hearing? Standby colleagues, we, we know there's a sound problem.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Comish, uh, Chair Bane?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak? Commissioner Krugliak? I'm, I'm not hearing Commissioner Krugliak. Thank you. Commissioner Krugliak is an aye. Commissioner Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin is absent. Commissioner Pons? Commissioner Pons is an aye. Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman? I'm sorry. Commissioner Inman is aye. Chair Bane, that motion passes unanimously with all Commissioners who are present voting aye.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioners. Let me ask if there is another motion, and in this case, I will assert things a little bit more, um, regarding map two. To direct flow analytics, uh, for refinement for IRC consideration. Commissioner Inman, I saw a hand up.
Yes, thank you. So I have a motion regarding map two.
Um, and Commissioner Inman and Commissioners in the future, I'll ask you to read it at dictation speed. So that the. Staff will try to. Type as you read, and we'll have that motion in front of us at the beginning and the end of discussion, and my apologies for not doing that in the first place.
So with respect to map two. For the District Three. Swap that for the, or swap in the PANA. Map for that district. And extend it up. As far as possible into Linda Vista. When you look at District Three. That was the main. Point. That, uh. Um, tried to expand. Uh, the coastal area. Eastward. As was, uh, discussed in the previous. Uh, motion along the I five to widen. The coastal district. If possible. But that, that's, uh, that's the motion.
Let me ask staff, did they succeed in capturing that? Do we have a second?
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Larson. I'll ask. Before we start the clock, let me see if we can get the motion up on the screen. I'm sorry. Okay. The call successfully manipulated the process to be promoted. Commissioner Diaz?
Sorry, unprocessed, processed question here.
Yes, please.
Say we want to submit maps or, or call in a motion to submit maps from the public. As draft maps. But that because in this case, um, the, the PANA map is only referring to one district. Can we then also say in a sep- do we need to make a separate motion for another map or all maps to include? That? Or how does that work?
Um, it's a very good question, and we. Frankly, that is uncharted territory from my memory of the discussion we had, and because all this is voluntary, it, I really do want to follow the Commission's will. My initial reaction is to do something along the lines of what you see before you as presented by Commissioner Inman. If we have it in one of the maps, that at least gives us some sense of what it would look like. If. At the end of today's discussion, you want to offer a motion that we include that in each map. I think that's a legitimate motion to make. For tonight only, I'm just very, very conscious of the quick turnaround we're asking from flow. So I will not tell a Commissioner what is in order or out of order unless Alex tells me. They're, we're going to drive flow into the ground and they won't be able to produce anything. Um, but I would say, Commissioner. Keep it in mind. And for any of the subsequent maps. Let's do it like this. I will ask Commissioners to keep Commissioner Diaz's comment in mind. And if you offer a motion. Please. Feel free to include. And I'd like to see the PANA map incorporated into. This refined proposal. Commissioner Diaz, does that answer, does that? Respond effectively for now?
Yes, and I would also add the paper submitted map that was submitted today.
Yes. Okay, yeah. So on that one, I think it'll be entirely, um, appropriate, and I'm not even sure we need to include it as a motion. Because the map was just submitted, um, for flow to do some analysis of that map. Um, per our standing procedure, go back to the author of the map with any questions they have to make sure they've got what they need for the. Actual technical drawing, and then we can consider it as we go. So we'll now start the clock for the motion before you. Um, I'll ask. For the map to be presented in just a second as well. And I have. Co-Vice Chair Garcia. Oh, I'm sorry, I never asked for it. Oh, yeah, we did. Commissioner Larson, right? Yeah. Thank you. Sorry, that's my fault for not recording it, though. Uh, co-Vice Chair Garcia, then Commissioner Russ. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, please.
Um, yeah, so just to clarify here, we're not trying to do anything with, um. Districts four and five with regards to Escondido. And Carlsbad. And then my second question, I have another question that's maybe. A little bit procedural. But I just wanted to. Just clarify the first question first. That the only thing we're doing on this map is substituting the PANA. Map and widening the coastal district.
Intend, yes.
Okay, so here's my question. Um. So when I looked at this map, map two, I was wondering about. The. Viability of this map with respect to compactness and contiguity, sort of echoing what Commissioner Dostal said earlier about. Um, District Four and the way it, uh, wraps around this very small, compact, geographically, um, District Five. And then the other, um, sort of, again, another. Uh, criteria that we're supposed to be considering is the. Racially polarized voting and, and given the com- the public comments that we got tonight about. Um, the Latinx population in North County. Um, and their presence in Escondido and the fact that they need to, at least what we heard, um, um. Their desire to be, um. Linked with. Some of the other, um, communities in that area that have a high, I guess, number of, uh, Latinx. Voters. I'm just wondering about when are we gonna get that information so that we know that maps that we're actually spending time on and that we're asking demographers to spend time on? Are. Worthwhile.
If I.
Go ahead, and I'll also ask Alex to post the map by sharing his screen again, which seemed to work well. And, um, alert Commissioners that after Commissioner Inman, I'll turn to Alex because I think some of that relates to flow, but let's hear from Commissioner Inman first.
So on the, on the first point on compactness. You can't, there are a number of criteria that play off of each other, and so I would say there are trade offs. And if you're trying to maintain a community of interest, say either 78 corridor. You can use that. Um, as a driver for the map and say that, you know, because this is a, a clear community of interest. That would be the reason you have the shape you have. And, uh, the fact that Escondido is, uh, I think it's actually over, a little over 50%. Uh, Hispanic, whereas none of the other 78 corridor communities are, um, um, are reached that high a threshold. I do believe that that's an issue. At this point, um. If we were to put forth a map like this, it would have to go, um, to, um, uh, to be reviewed to see if it satisfies. Um, the criteria from the Voting Rights Act. I still think it's a valid map to put forward. Um, but all maps would eventually have to be reviewed with regard to the Voting Rights Act. So that's, uh, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. That, that's helpful and, um. Um, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Russ.
Yes, I believe the, uh, PANA map, uh, went all the way west to the I five. So if you look at this, it's going to, uh, display some of the, uh, the green area that, that, or the, um, coastal area. So we, uh, so now we've got, um. We, we've got, uh, we've got some slack in the, in the amount of, um, of coastal, uh, people in the coastal area. Which could be, um, could be used to, um. Thicken up the corridor that, uh, Commissioner, uh, Garcia, uh, was, uh, concerned with, or it could be used to, um. Possibly displace, uh, uh, Carlsbad, uh, putting them in a coast, in the coastal area. And therefore, um, uh, if Carlsbad's in the coastal area. Then we could incorporate. That Northwest Quadrant. Uh, from Camp Pendleton over to the I fifteen. And down to the, and, and down to the, uh, the, the, the cities that are on the 78 corridor, we could then, we could then accommodate that. I don't know how many people, uh, how many people in that coastal area would be displaced by putting in the P- the PANA, uh, act as, as we move that, um, that, um. I think you have it listed as, uh, District Three. As we move it into the, um, uh, into Five. I, I don't know if, uh, if Alex, if you, if you know that number, I mean, if you can get that number real quick or not.
Unfortunately, I cannot get that very clearly in this meeting, but I will be able to, to look at that area. Yes.
But you understand what I'm saying, Alex, is that, uh, that, um. What, what you've listed here, uh, in yellow. Is District Three, and it's gonna go into, uh, all the way to I five, and there's gonna be, that those were some people who were counted in the coastal. And there's going to be, those were some people who were counted in the coastal region. And like I say, it could be used to fatten up that, that corridor up there by Del Mar and Solana Beach. Or, or even to be placed in Carlsbad and Carlsbad's 115,000 can then go to that upper Northwest quadrant of the, of the county. Did I make myself clear, Alex? I'm not sure if I did.
You did, you did to me. Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dostal.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood the answer to Commissioner Garcia's or Vice Chair Garcia's question. So it wasn't clear to me, at what point are we going to get, we do this map and then next time we come back to the meeting, we're going to have the RPV analysis of this map or, I mean, what's, what's the timing?
It's a very fair question, and I wish I had a better answer. The, the challenge we have tonight in particular is that the instructions we're issuing are for revisions to be completed by Monday. That won't be our normal time schedule, but it, it will require a certain amount of flexibility in how it's portrayed in those maps. Now, I will remind that we're probably going to have a meeting next week. And that meeting may very well include RPV as an agenda item. It won't be a mapping session as such, but between that discussion and what I hope will be time for some RPV analysis of the refined maps that are posted on October 25th, we should have a good bit of that information available, as Commissioner Inman explained, in the very near future and certainly available for November 1st. Commissioner Inman, I don't mean to be putting words in your mouth. Is procedurally, does that sound like the way it may play out?
Yes, yes.
So Commissioner Dostal has a way to say, I can't guarantee, even with flow working really hard, that they'll be able to capture what you and Co-Vice Chair Garcia have accurately and completely legitimately raised. I just don't know if they can do that by Monday. What I do think is between the time that map's posted and our actual discussion of it on November 1st, we'll have some information and hopefully some analysis that can be shared with the commission and we can discuss it.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Russ?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm.
Okay. No, no problem. Commissioner Pons, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
That's quite all right. The question posed by Commissioner Dostal goes to my first question about creating the overlays that depicts the racial and ethnic population densities for these areas that we're talking about moving. Because the numbers matter, but I need to understand better what's behind the numbers. And so there may be a really compact area of these BIPOC populations that need to be considered as we move the lines either east or west or north and south because that will impact the RPV analysis of these discussions. So I'm hoping that flow analytics can deliver those overlays quickly. So when we talk about adding the pattern renderings, we can understand what that means, not just visually, but as far as the racial and ethnic population densities and the impact that they would have on elections and the candidates within those elections.
Thank you for that. Alex, your Ken, do you want to offer any response on that?
I, I have, I guess, one question, clarifying question, and, and that is, you know, the census based on the tables that you've seen. And I'll just jump over to one of them to, for an example, is in these statistics, there's, you know, population by race ethnicity for these races alone, not being Hispanic or Latino. And then the final column Hispanic, Latino, which could be any of these races. And I guess my question is, you know, there are many combinations you could make with all these, like in the census data behind the scenes, that I think there's upwards of 75. So I guess I would like to understand a little bit like what these coalitions or BIPOC communities in combination would be that would be most useful if it is, you know, a combination of Asian, Black, African American, and one other, something of that sort, if that makes sense.
It does. And I had this discussion with John during the training session. And when you look at the racial populations, you have the white, Hispanic, the Asian, Island Pacific, and all others. So what I'd asked him to look at is what would the coalition of those other BIPOC organizations, those other BIPOC organizations look like if they were combined? And so he said, you know, he would take it back to you guys to see how quick you could develop somewhat of a, a program or to sort of display that. So, I mean, I took that to him on Tuesday. He said it would bring it back to you all, and I think it's underway. But I really need to understand that as we move forward and moving these lines, east and west and north and south.
Okay, I think that is kind of enough direction to make, you know, initially some coral ploth maps that can help us, you know, visualize if you combine some of those races and non-white race ethnicities together. I think flow will take our, our best attempt at it and then show the results. Because like I said, there are many different combinations we could do, and, and I don't think all of them would necessarily be helpful and inundate us with too much data. But I do understand the point in putting that on a map so it can be visualized. Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Hey, we have about two and a half minutes left for this item. Commissioner Dostal, did you want to add something more? Was that an old hand? Sorry. With no further hands, though, and nothing else Commissioner Inman or Alex want to have more details of from the motion? Commissioner Inman, it's your motion, so I assume you can answer yourself.
Well, one clarifying point, Commissioner Russ was talking about impacts on potentially moving Carlsbad in or out. Were, were you, were you wanting to add that as part of this motion to consider moving Carlsbad or reassigning Carlsbad, Commissioner Russ, or I had not originally intended that?
Yeah, and, and you know, we can go with your original intent and then have, have another motion where I would like to see what that Northwest quadrant of the county would look like as, as, as District Five.
Yeah, I would, I would.
Instead of muddying, muddying the water of your, of your, of your motion can, I, I, I wouldn't want to do that.
When we want to limit the number of motions.
Yeah, maybe.
And so if, if, if an evaluation of that can be made as, you know, an extension of what we're currently doing, it might be simpler as opposed to a whole separate motion.
If, if you're, if you're willing to, to include that in your motion, I'd be fine with that.
Yes, so.
Okay, I'd be fine.
So as making the changes, the first, the first, the first set of changes take precedent. And then if you find sufficient slack, that you could do things with Carlsbad, that would be fine.
Yeah.
Commissioner Inman, I think I'll ask you to think about it for just a moment because we've just about exhausted time on this. But I'll ask you to come back and read at dictation speed so we can capture that additional language. Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Sorry, I think I had forgotten to lower my hand.
No problem at all. Okay. Commissioner Inman and Commissioner Russ, shall we bring the motion back up and just capture that additional language for it? Sorry. Alex, could you stop your share screen? So Commissioner Russ or Commissioner Inman, do you want to?
Am I still talking? Oh, yeah, I am. There we go. As you widen the coastal district, if possible, extend all the way up through Carlsbad.
So after the words, if possible, there we go.
Yeah.
For the friendly amendment. Inman is the second for the friendly. Inman is the second.
Commissioner Russ and Inman, is that what we've been talking about? And then I need to make sure Commissioner Larson's comfortable with it as well. But does that capture it?
Yeah, and then, and then that would free up 115,000 individuals that could then be used to connect then all of that Northwest quadrant of the, of the county with the 78 corridor communities.
Commissioner Inman, that's acceptance of a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
I'm a little troubled by, I don't understand when you say include Carlsbad, you either include it or you don't. So is that what we mean? Is it, is not a portion of Carlsbad? You mean the entire of, territory of Carlsbad?
Yeah, included in the, in the coastal, in the coastal zone.
That's, if possible.
Carlsbad west of the Five. Is that what we mean?
Well, I think the idea is to include all of Carlsbad.
Include all of Carlsbad, yeah.
Because you're going to need those 114,000 people if you're going to connect the Northwest.
That I approve, yeah.
Okay, good. So that amendment is accepted as a friendly amendment? Which means we can move to a vote in just a moment. I want to make sure everyone's comfortable.
Chair, do you want to? Well, the 114,000 people that are now in Carlsbad, that are now in the coastal, you know, put them into what we, what we've been calling District Five. So that we can include all the way up to the northern boundary.
So that's captured by include, you, you're saying for the record that all of Carlsbad includes the area you just described up to the northern boundary of Carlsbad.
Well, no, 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 would include all, all of the, all of Carlsbad in the coastal district. And, and now you've got 114,000 people that you can add to, to, to the, to the 78 corridor communities.
I would just stop, stop the motion at this point and leave degrees of freedom of discretion to flow. I don't want to over encumber the ability to do the, to do the analysis.
Good idea, Ken. I like it.
Okay.
And that's to give flow some flexibility. The point's very well taken. Commissioner Brown, then we'll move to a vote. You're muted, I'm afraid.
Yeah.
There we go.
Can that, if, if you're looking for more people to include that in that District Five, can you go farther east than the Five Freeway? Because we have Bonzo bordering the Five Freeway, and that's connected with Fallbrook very closely. And we have Valley Center and Palma and so forth.
I don't want to get overly complicated with, I'm sorry, with the motion. Thank you.
But if they, if he needs more people in that, maybe he can just move it a little further east, that line.
I understand the, the sentiment. Thank you. Yeah.
And we, you know, part of the magic of this is we're trying to provide direction, which will allow flow to exercise discretion, how they fulfill that direction and identify complications or possible opportunities or options. So I'm confident that'll be addressed. All right, with that, David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Chair Bame. Commissioner Serbin is absent. Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Commissioner Caterina?
Aye.
Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman? Chair Bame, that motion passes unanimously with all commissioners who are present voting aye.
Very good. Let me ask if there is another motion to offer to direct flow analytics regarding refinement, refinement of any of the IRC draft maps or public maps. Commissioner Chen?
So I, I really do think it's going to be problematic trying to move Escondido into Five. I really think that with the Carlsbad airport issues, and I don't want us to fall into the recency bias of this comments we've heard about moving Carlsbad out of District Five. We heard a lot of comments about keeping Carlsbad in District Five earlier, again, with the airport and a bunch of other things, quite a few comments about that. So just in case we cannot do it, as far as moving us to District Five, I'd like us to look at Map Three and ask flow analytics to recombine.
Can I ask you, can I ask you to read it slowly? So the staff will try to capture it as you go.
Okay, so the proposal is, take Map Three, recombine and keep intact cities like Ramona and Julian, and then put the Pana proposal for, I think it's District Three, whatever district that is, include that in Map Three. Those are the only changes I would make. So just keep Ramona and Julian, those cities intact, and then use the Pana map also.
Alex, I'll request you to stop sharing your screen so we can capture the language of that.
Well, isn't that really the, the motion that Commissioner Brown made? With the exception of the Pana, with the, the exception of the Pana inclusion.
No, Commissioner Brown's motion changes a lot of other things. Like she was putting Escondido back into Five. I'm not asking to do that.
Right.
So this is a backup. In case that doesn't work, I would like to have this map available to us as a backup to what Commissioner Brown proposed.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Chen, does that capture it, the language on the screen?
Yes.
Good. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, thank you. We start the clock and we move to discussion. I have Co-Vice Chair Caterina and then Commissioner Diaz. Oops, sorry, Co-Vice Chair Caterina was, who will be next up on motions. Thank you for that. Commissioner Diaz, please.
Yes, I think I already mentioned this earlier about the desire to include the Pana proposal and all of the draft maps being proposed right now in all three motions. I, I support that. Again, I, just full disclaimer, I'm not a resident of North County, so I'm going to rely heavily on the public testimony that we received, not only tonight, but in previous meetings.
Very good. I don't see any other requests for coming. Commissioner Chen, did you want to speak again or said just a, and still raised?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me lower that then.
No, want to be sure. Um, I'll turn to Commissioner Inman in his SPOC hat. And Alex, are there any clarifications or comments they want to make regarding the tasking? And then we'll move to a vote.
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Okay, Alex?
Uh, I don't have any clarifying questions. I understand the motion. The only thing I'll, I will say is if, you know, Ramona or Julian are, are fully in one of those districts, four or five, four, I'm thinking, I mean, there will be some, some other modifications that are needed. And we will try to reduce, you know, that, that change as much as possible.
Thank you for that. I will ask you, Alex, are we still under the ceiling of what flow can turn around by Monday?
Yes, I do believe so.
We'll hold you to that. Very good. All right. With that, can we put the motion back up on the screen? And David, when it's back up on the screen, we'll have a vote. Please go ahead.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Commissioner Caterina?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin is absent. Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Chair Bame, that motion passes unanimously with all commissioners who are present voting aye.
Very good. I believe Co-Vice Chair Caterina wanted to offer a motion.
I would like to move that we disregard Map Four.
Thank you for that. I won't ask staff to type that up because I think it's fairly clear. Do we have a second? Commissioner Hanson, thank you. Discussion? Commissioner Dostal?
Um, I just have a question. Aren't we disregarding Map One and Map Three through the, since they're not in any of the motions to afford?
I think you missed, Maps One and Four did not have any motions.
Sorry, sorry, Maps One and Four. I'm just saying, do we need a separate motion to disregard when we're already disregarding them?
I wanted to address Map One next.
Please go ahead.
My understanding is the same as Commissioner Del Falls, which is if there's no motion to look at them, we're not looking at them anymore. So I thought.
Understood, but procedurally, it is completely in order for a commissioner to move to drop one map now so that we have consideration of other maps with this map dropped.
If I could, Chair Bame, make a comment on that. So what hap, if we don't address a map in this meeting, such as Map One and Map Four, flow does not have any directions to bring back a revised version of those maps at the next meeting. It does not mean those maps cannot be used at a future point in time. They are maps, they're in our public record. They're available for use. So by not voting on Maps One and Four simply means Alex can say, yes, I can do that and get it done by Monday. But it doesn't mean they've gone away.
Thank you for that. Co-Vice Chair Caterina?
So, uh, so having heard that, I would like to withdraw my motion to, to disregard Map Four. However, I would like to have a discussion and consideration of adjustments to Map One. And the reason I have an issue with the other two, the other maps that we're talking about is we have a little bit of a coastal affluenza problem. And Map One is one of the only maps that breaks up the coastal affluenza. And so, so I would like to make a motion regarding Map One that we move Escondido.
Okay, before you begin, if you don't mind, let me, let me pause, let me, let staff get ready. And if you can read it at dictation speed, that'll be helpful.
Okay.
So the motion previously made is withdrawn, correct?
That's correct.
And Commissioner Hanson, that's, okay, good. So that motion is withdrawn. And now Commissioner Cater, Co-Vice Chair Caterina, please continue with the motion you want to offer.
Okay, regarding Map One, District Five, I would like to move Carlsbad into District Three and move Escondido into District Five.
I know, three is not connected.
You mean four. Sorry, four, excuse me, yes. Magenta.
Yeah.
Okay.
And in District Three, sorry. Um, so you want me to finish? Okay. So District Three, I would like to incorporate the PANA map. And as a result, that may change District Two to which I direct flow to adjust accordingly.
Okay.
Okay, so just for clarification, the motion on the screen would read regarding draft, draft map one, then we can remove that District Five reference, correct? So that it would read regarding draft map one, move Carlsbad. Co-Vice Chair Caterina?
Yes, it moves into District Four, though.
Right, right. Okay, so move Carlsbad into District Four.
Yep.
And move Escondido into District?
Five.
Five?
Yeah.
And in District Three, incorporate the PANA map with which may change District Two, yeah, okay.
Don't change.
David?
Yes.
Very good. All right.
I second that.
That is the motion from Co-Vice Chair Caterina, second from Commissioner Russ. Did I hear? Good, thank you. We will start the 15-minute clock. I have Commissioner Chen. Please go ahead.
So regarding the affluenza issue, I will point out that we had Coronado and Point Loma in with some lower income areas and moving them into those areas didn't seem to be very popular. So I don't know that other areas want richer areas as part of their thing. I think putting together the coastal area probably was the right thing. It doesn't change the motion, I understand, but it says it may keep in mind for the future when we look at these maps.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Diaz?
I wanted to thank Commissioner Caterina for her creativity and, and in developing this, this map. I do agree with Commissioner Chen. We have to think carefully about containing communities of interest as we're being thoughtful about the, these maps. Not saying I'm neither opposed nor supportive. I'm kind of neutral on this. I'd like to see what the public says, but I would agree that they were going to get a lot of opposition probably, possibly, but you never know. But I, I just thank you for your creativity. That's all I have to say.
Hey, thank you. Commissioner Krugliak? Great, you're muted.
Um, yeah, I was just going to have a similar comment, which is that even though these areas might be very expensive to live in and have high housing prices, many people who live there have lived there for a very, very long time. And so I think just blanketly describing it as an influenza problem actually isn't reflective of the cities themselves. There's a lot of, there's a big diversity across those coastal communities.
For that, not seeing any other comments from commissioners. I'll turn to, oh, Commissioner Larson, please.
Yes, I'd like to just observe that Map One shows Pacific Beach and Ocean Beach different from Point Loma. And those three little towns are so closely connected. I think that would be an error. So I, I can't support the map as it's shown.
Right, that would change it.
I'm not seeing any other requests to speak. I'll ask SPOC and Flow if there are any clarifications they want to pursue or offer.
No clarifying questions. I understand the criteria of the motion. I will point out, I think on the last point that was just made, you know, when drawing District Three, and I can share my screen right now to help show this. If I understood correctly, you know, District Three will be what incorporates the PANA map. Correct me if I'm wrong, please, Vice Chair Caterina. But what that means, and like you mentioned in the last point of the motion, is that District Two will definitely need to be altered to, to, you know, allow that to happen. So a potential area, you know, where we could make that change would be the extension of District Two North. So things like that, we will, we will do if, if this should pass.
Yes, that's what I had in mind. And I can, I can further clarify that if that would make, make more sense to, to suggest that PB and PB and Mission Beach being, you know, being incorporated into District Two if needed.
Vice Chair Garcia?
Yeah, if I might, Amy, suggest that when District Three, the yellow district, when the PANA map gets incorporated, I'm wondering if that, if flow would consider, if you would consider this friendly amendment and flow would consider actually trying to move District Three east to the border with the, with District Five. How District Five comes down? Do you see what I mean? And so that it would just continue east, it wouldn't include Poway. But to me, right now, the problem with this map is you have Encinitas, Solana Beach, Del Mar, Poway, going all the way out to, you know, pretty far out in, in the East County. So anyway, just wondering if that's a consider, if some, that's worth considering. Not knowing at all if the numbers would work. Yeah, I mean, you know, and the, and the only reason I suggest this is the other two maps are, are very similar. And I would, I would really like to see what the public thinks. Is this something that is of interest or is it a non-issue? So I, I would, I think, you know, Commissioner Garcia, if, if we need to add can ex, you know, can extend district boundaries to the, to the east. I, I'm, I'm happy with that. I mean, without knowing the numbers and flow could, will tell you this themselves, it's very hard to tell how this is all going to play out once they start changing the, the data. So Alex, what, what would be most helpful for you in terms of giving you direction?
Uh, I think, I think it is going to be tough that the, the PANA map, without having it in our system and understanding what the total population of that is right now, I might not have as much wiggle room to move boundaries to the east as much. But I can certainly, you know, take it under consideration. But I really do, I just want to get that, that PANA map in our system and understand what the total population is first.
Yeah, and I, and I do appreciate Commissioner Larson's comments about Pacific Beach and Imperial and Mission Beach, you know, being very similar to Point Loma and a part of their community with Ocean Beach. So, and that may be enough of the population to make up for some of the other changes that happen in other areas.
A Commissioner Pons, then Commissioner Dostal.
Commissioner Caterina, I like your proposal. And let me go back to the discussion about the military community. They talked about the military community in the north, Camp Pendleton and Miramar. The largest military community is down near Coronado, National City, Chulaveston, Imperial Beach, that supports the San Diego Naval Base. That's the largest military community. So if you would consider extending the southern boundary of District Two to capture National City, all of National City and Chulaveston, I don't know what that would do to the numbers, but I got to tell you, that would maintain some sort of cohesiveness in that military population. Because that's the largest footprint of military personnel, active duty and retired. And I'll tell you, I know that because the SD MAC, the San Diego Military Affairs Commission just did an environmental and economic impact study, and that's where the largest footprint of military personnel are.
Vice Chair Caterina, are you muted?
Sorry. Um, yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a good statement. I'm, I'm a little concerned, having played around with that part of the map, I'm concerned about population, but, but I think, I think, you know, I, I think flow is going to have to look at it and see where they need people. But I would consider that as a friendly amendment.
Thank you. Let's look at the numbers.
If I may interject, I would just say that I probably can't, I would probably welcome legal counsel at, at some point if we think about District One in particular, or the Southern Boundary District in terms of moving particular cities in, to District Two and thinking about the Hispanic Latino population. But I think that'll be for, for future consideration once we have RPB.
I, I don't understand that because we've been given consideration to that, to that issue in the north. And if you listen to some of the testimonies in the past, those out east wanted to be part of the, the communities to the west because they felt like it was disenfranchised and they'd have a voice. So they actually wanted to be combined with Carlsbad communities and communities along the, along the coast. So I don't understand why that has to go to council, because it's reflective of previous comments.
Big percentage.
Let me take Commissioner Dostal and then perhaps offer a comment on that. Let's see where we are.
Thank you, Chair Bame. I just want to say with great respect to Commissioner Caterina, I liked her creativity in this, and that's why I wanted to see it. Raise it up the flagpole, see if anyone saluted. We didn't hear from the public, I don't think, or the commissioners on wanting to continue with this map. So I feel like, so those are my comments. I, I think it's, the other maps reflect what we've heard from the community and I think those are the, the maps that should go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let me turn to counsel for a potential comment. Marguerite, did you want to weigh in on this?
Uh, yes, a couple of things, just to not be unresponsive to the sensitivity of the commission for the voting rights of a, a variety of groups in the county. I, I, I don't, I, I, I applaud that. We have a complex situation in District One, but we also have a complex situation countywide in that there is evidence of racially polarized voting. However, down in District One, the minorities in combination of minority groups are very successful with elections. And that's another matter that needs to be considered. I want to support what Chair Bame said and Commissioner Inman. All of these maps, when completed, will be analyzed for the effectiveness of districts under the Voting Rights Act. There'll be some testing being done also by the attorneys and the consultants. I think at this point in your deliberations, it is fair to experiment with a variety of communities of interest. In the southern area, we have the immigrant, Latino culture, border interests that have been brought forth. But there's also competing communities, including the military. And I think at this early point in the process, it's fair to look at them all. And they will be presented to your voting rights consultants who will be able to advise you then whether changes are required or not. So I wouldn't hold back with taking a look at options at this point.
And Commissioner Pons, for what it's worth, I think you make a very interesting point about the two, and I think you could argue even that there might be more military communities and how they might be illustrated. I wonder if that might be better done as a separate motion so that we could really hone in on those issues and the public could hone in on those issues. We heard some of it earlier tonight. But it would be an opportunity to keep that the priority focus for that particular map and analysis, rather than mixing it with some of the other things that Co-Vice Chair Caterina already covered in her motion. I'm, I'm not arguing one way or the other. I'm just providing another option that might be another way to get at the issue that you quite legitimately raised.
Yeah, I don't want to create another map because, you know, Commissioner Caterina said she would accept looking at and exploring and investigating what that would do to the numbers if we expanded the District Two slightly east and slightly south. And then let's do the exploration that Flow Analytics bring the numbers back to us. And if they don't meet the criteria, then guess what? It's already voted out. It doesn't pass through, it doesn't get a first pass. So I'd like to keep that on for consideration. Let me go back to what Commissioner Dostal said, I think it was Commissioner Katerina's motion was second, and I'm sort of reinforcing that motion, because I think it's a legitimate proposal. So I'd like to keep it on the table and vote it through, and if it doesn't get through, then guess what, it dies a slow death.
Well, number one, I'm sure that, that great sigh we heard was from Alex with someone arguing, we don't want to task another map, so very good on that. Could I ask, because we're getting to the end of this, this discussion then, could, Alex, could you stop sharing your screen? And staff, could you be ready to take the, what sounds like a friendly amendment? Co-Vice Chair Katerina, I have that correct, right, this is going to be considered as friendly amendment? And Commissioner? Was it Commissioner Larson?
Russ.
Russ, sorry, thank you. So Commissioner Russ will need your agreement on this too. Commissioner Pons, does that capture it, what you see on the screen? You're muted, I'm afraid?
Yes.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina, is that acceptable? Commissioner Russ?
Yes, it is, that's fine.
Good. So with that, David, we'll move to a vote, if we can leave the, the motion up on the screen, thank you.
Chair Bame? Make sure that Alex is clear on this, can I ask that?
Yes, I am clear, thank you, Commissioner Inman.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
You're doing your SPOC job, Commissioner Inman, thank you. David, please proceed with the vote.
Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal? Commissioner Dostal is an aye?
No, that was a no. That was a no.
Commissioner Dostal is a no. Thank you. Commissioner Larson?
Nay.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Nay.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin is absent, Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Oh.
Commissioner Diaz is a no. So with that motion passes, with Commissioners Dostal, Larson, Krugliak and Diaz voting no, all other commissioners who are present voting ayes, we have nine votes aye, four votes no. Motion passes.
Thank you very much for that, and thanks for the good discussion. My sense is we've covered most of the issues that came up in discussion. I would be willing to entertain one more motion, but given the hour and the discussion that I think has been very good, and I hope the public understands how useful the comments have been, both from in the room and virtually tonight, because I think you've seen that incorporated. Are there any other motions commissioners wish to make? Very good, so with that, we will close this agenda item, I'm sorry, Commissioner Diaz? You're muted?
All right, just wanted to clarify my earlier comment about, I'm not sure if in Map Two, the very first motion that we voted on, if Pana map was considered to be incorporated. I don't know if that was the original, made it into the original motion, or if I need to make another motion.
I don't think it was at the time included explicitly.
Map Three?
Was it Commissioner, that's from Commissioner Brown, if I remember correctly?
Correct.
Yeah?
So that was Map Three?
Yep, correct.
No, it wasn't included at that point.
No reference to it.
Right, okay. We can tackle this one of two ways, we could go through a procedural process, which might be a little tricky, given that we've already approved the motion, or if it's acceptable, I would be willing to make a one-time exception to confirm that Flow Analytics understands they should, as part of their due diligence and incorporating all comments, try to apply the Pana map within that first motion. Commissioner Diaz, which would you like to pursue?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just questioning.
We can do it informally or formally, is what I'm really saying. From my perspective.
I guess, I mean, so we have it on the record, it should be formal, so it's in the minutes.
Chair Bame?
Yes, sir.
The, the problem with, with setting the Pana map in each one of these is that we're, we are pinning, we are, we are pinning one of the, one of the five districts. We're saying it is so, and it, and there's no, it's not going to, and I think that's, I think it's problematic to, to have one district and say, hey, this is the way it is in every map that we've, that we've had. Because it might be better, because we need to keep the degrees of freedom.
And giving that degree of freedom away. Good, and because we have a few other things we need to do tonight, Commissioner Diaz, I'll ask you, I'll just ask to beg your indulgence, I'd really rather not reopen a motion right now. So instead, I think we'll have plenty of analysis of that map in the other motions, and when we get to the discussion of it, of it on November 1st, I'm sure it's going to be part of the RPB and VRA analysis as well. I think it'll be appropriate to look at it and include it at that time. Okay?
Yeah, just noting that two and three are vastly different, but I will accept that.
Okay.
As long as we have racially polarized voting analysis.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I said, to your point about as long as we have the racial, racial polarized voting analysis on that.
Right, which I expect to be on our agenda for next week, which I'll explain in a moment, okay? Good. All right, so that's it for mapping tonight, thank you very much, commissioners, a good discussion, I think we're well prepared for next week. Again, we are responsible to have the maps posted by Monday, October 25th, so we'll be in close contact with SPOC Inman and Flow Analytics to make sure that happens. When it does happen, staff will, of course, have it posted for the public and sent to commissioners with, as soon as they are available. We move on to Agenda Item Six, Public Outreach and Engagement Services, or I'm sorry, Discussion and Possible Approval of Enhancement to IRC Website and Associate Expense. Unfortunately, Commissioner Serbin has been unavoidably detained. I won't go into the reasons here, but I, it is not his choice, I can promise you that. He has agreed that it could be taken up in the special meeting next week. I'm very hesitant to engage on this item without him present, so I will entertain a motion to table this agenda item until our meeting next week. Commissioner Larson, thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia, thank you, any discussion? David, could you please call a roll for the vote to table Agenda Item Six until our special meeting next week?
Thank you, Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin is absent, Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman? Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Chair Bame, that motion passes unanimously with all commissioners who are present voting aye.
Chair Bame? When is our meeting next week, I don't have one, I have one November 1st.
I was just about to get into that, so thank you, Commissioner Chen. All right, let, let me explain what's coming up, and I know some of this was hinted at, but we don't have, we haven't had a chance to discuss it, and, and Commissioner Serbin's unexpected absence has made it a little more challenging, which is my way of apologizing for talking to staff while the vote was being conducted. But we move on to Agenda Item Seven. That concludes the business before us tonight as the independent redistricting commission. We do have a busy week ahead, as I explained, on Monday, October 25th, the revised maps will be posted in accordance with the instructions we've issued to Flow Analytics tonight. Those maps will provide the foundation for the IRC's first draft map public hearing and regular meeting, both which will occur one week from now, from then, on Monday, November 1st. Before those, that November 1st session, though, you'll remember that I mentioned last week that we have a number of other items we need to take up. This is everything from the website enhancement that we just had to postpone, to the monthly budget update that we did not take up tonight, to a few other items. I am therefore going to add a special meeting next week, all virtual, to be held on Wednesday, October 27th, starting at 5:30 PM. After commissioners responded to staff's request, I think two requests actually, which day would work best next week, that seems to be what's agree, what's, will work best for us to achieve form. I do want to mention
What time was that?
5:30?
Either.
5:30 PM. We will get out an agenda for that just as quickly as we can. It will almost certainly include at least some discussion of racially polarized voting and Voting Rights Act analyses to both wrap up and continue the discussions we had before. Okay, so please mark your calendar for that special meeting, October 27th at 5:30. Now, just to explain a little bit more what will happen on November 1st, currently scheduled to start at 5:00 PM, we'll begin with our first draft map public hearing, during which we will hear public comment and receive any maps the public wishes to provide, although, of course, they're welcome to provide maps ahead of that meeting. It will proceed much like the other public hearings we had before we entered this mapping phase. After that hearing ends, we will move to a regular meeting to review the latest maps, the ones we've just asked for revisions with tonight, and provide Flow Analytics with instructions for the next set of draft maps. Okay, so October 28th, special meeting primarily on non-mapping issues. November 1st, and that's at 5:30 PM. November 1st, starting at least for now at 5:00 PM, we'll be in touch about that. A public hearing followed by a regular meeting.
David, you said October 28th, you meant October 27th.
October 27th, I'm sorry, October 27th, yes. Commissioner Justal, that was your question too, sorry, thank you, all right. So more details on November 1st to follow, agenda coming for November, October 27th, as quickly as possible. I also want to mention for commissioners and for the public that there are some meetings of the California State Citizens Redistricting Commission, or CCRC, coming up in the next week or so. In fact, they'll be having meetings to receive public input tomorrow and the next day, October 20th, yeah, October 22nd and 23rd, starting at 9:30 AM. Those are meetings to receive public input and will be held virtually. Next week, the State Redistricting Commission will have visualization meetings regarding Southern California, and that marks another step where they are paying particular interest and attention to our region. You can see it on this slide taken from their website on the right column there. So meetings on the 27th, 28th and 29th, starting at various times. I just wanted to point that out for the benefit of the public and commissioners. There are, of course, redistricting commission meetings happening in various other areas of San Diego, in some of which, Commissioner Justal, involving our own commissioners, Commissioner Justal, please?
Oh, sorry, I just had a question about the budget item.
I'm, please.
So it sounds like we're having a special meeting partly to talk about the budget. I know there was something specific this time, but that's not just, I just wanted to know if we can just take the budget summary out of our meetings, since we have so much to do? If we could just get the reports and not have a, an oral report on it at our meetings, that's, just wanted to throw that out there.
If we can do it, we will, but there are some potential other budget issues coming, including, but not limited to the website enhancement issue that we were going to discuss tonight, which involves some financial costs. So I would beg the commission's indulgence while previewing that, and I promise we'll be in touch with on all the budget issues that we may have as quickly as we possibly can. All right, so with regard to all the meetings going on, ours and other commissions, please, if you're a member of the public, feel free to contact them or our IRC staff, we'll be happy to help you get in touch with other commissions. More details and meetings, meeting links involving our county IRC remain available on our website, drawyourcommunity.com. Thanks again for attending tonight, commissioners, thanks for your patience, this meeting is adjourned at 9:38 PM, see you next week.